Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ladies and gentlemen, before we go into the roll call, I'd like to just offer a moment of silence in honor of the two officers and the citizen who tragically lost their life the past few days ago. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Flingis.
Here.
Vice Chair Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Bonar.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We would appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you very much. Going on to item number four, all comments made under this item for a specific item, action items, will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Saying none, I'll move on to item number five. Okay, and item number five, it's my understanding we don't have the minutes, so there's going to be, we're going to obey item number five to the July 7th, excuse me, the July 8th, 2014 meeting. Go on to item number six, let's, these are the housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, excuse me?
We need a motion for that item.
Oh, I apologize. Going back to item number five, could I have a motion, please, that would obey the minutes to the next meeting of July 8th, 2014?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve obeying the item number five, the minutes to the meeting of July 8th, 2014 carries. Moving on to item number six, these are our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the July 8th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number eight, TMP 53897, items 43 through 45, VAR 53923, VAR 53924, and SDR 53925. Item number 52, SUP 53624. Item number 56, SUP 53907. Item number 58, SDR 53752. The following items have been requested to be tabled. Item number 25 and 26, VAR 53361 and SUP 53362. And just to clarify on item number 58, it is SDR 53752. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of those items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, and I'll entertain a motion.
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, with regards to items 25 and 26, the tabling of those items, I've been working with several people in the community in the downtown area to look at an alternative to deal with this item and come forward to the council with a recommendation for a more appropriate naming process for our former mayor, and so it's appropriate to have those tabled at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to obey items eight, 43 through 45, 52, 56, and 58 until the July 8th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting, and table items 25 and 26.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll go on now to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or an applicant so desires. The items on the consent agenda tonight are items number seven, items number nine, and items number 10. Do any applicants or any members of the commission wish to be heard on any of those items? Saying none, Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion is to approve items seven, nine, and 10 on the consent portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items number seven, nine, and 10 on the consent portion of the agenda carries.
Mr. Chair, items seven, nine, and 10 are all final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
Thank you. We're going to go on now to the one-motion-one-vote portion. The following items that may be considered in one-motion-one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings, excuse me, all public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission, not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. It's my understanding that Commissioner Trusdale wants item number 11 pulled, and I believe the City of Las Vegas wants item number 21 pulled. Are there any other members of the public, or applicants, or members of the commission would like to see any of these other items pulled? Saying none, we'll go on, starting with item number 12, which is SUP 53745. The applicant is Lamar Krutbosh. The owner is Fumi Osvaldo, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed bail bond service use at 503 East Bonneville Avenue in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13 is SUP 53750. The applicant is Faith Lutheran Middle School and High School. The owner is Obannon Plaza LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 6,020 square-foot thrift shot at 2211 South Rainbow Boulevard in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14 is SUP 53827. The applicant is Mariscos Playa Escundida LLC. The owner is Gardner &amp; Associates, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 1,035 square-foot restaurant at 1203 East Charleston Boulevard Suite 140 in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 15 is SUP 53889. The applicant is Alan Silverstang. The owner is Stugatz LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed 746 square-foot restaurant at 800 South Main Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 16 is SDR 53792. The applicant is Ed Bernstein. Owner is Crosshill 1 LLC, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 600 square-foot expansion to an existing 1,962 square-foot office building on .15 acres at 516 South 4th Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 17 is SDR 53862. The applicant owner is Cox Communications, Las Vegas, Inc., for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 12,024 square-foot building and a 3,344 square-foot generator yard expansion to an existing 3,450 square-foot utility installation on 3.9 acres at 2451 Ernest May Lane in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 18 is MSP 53766. The applicant owner is Shadow Mountain Marketplace LLC, for possible action on a request for an amendment to a previous approved master sign plan to add one freestanding sign and one monument sign to the interior of a shopping center on 35 acres at 6415 North Decatur Boulevard in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 19 is VAC 53843. The applicant is 95 Management LLC, and the owner is KAG Development South LLC, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate Bureau of Land Management Right-of-Way Grant Easement generally located on the northern alignment of Grand Teton Drive between Walupi Way and Grand Canyon Drive TD. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. And the final action on, the final item underneath the one-action-one-vote portion is item number 20, which is VAC 53898. The applicant owner is DR Horton, Inc., for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of a 10-foot-wide City of Las Vegas Equestrian Trail easement generally located at the northeast corner of Grand Teton Drive and TP Lane in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Do any of the commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion is to approve items 12 through 20 on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda.
Motion to approve items 12 through 20 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 12, 13, 15, 18, 19, and 20 are all final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Items number 14, 16, and 17 will go forward to the July 16th City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're going to go on now to the public hearing items, and we're going to pull items number 60 and 61 forward. I'll begin with item number 60, which is DIR 53876. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a presentation of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan Annual Report. Staff has no recommendation, and may we have a report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Fred Solis, Department of Planning. The item before you is the 2020 Master Plan Annual Report. In this report, we'll briefly go over the implementation progress of the 2020 Master Plan Policy Document, 2020 Master Plan Elements, and the walkable community plans. Pursuing to NRS 278, the Planning Commission is required to review the progress of the master plan annually and to make a recommendation to the governing body for the implementation of the plan. The master plan policy progress, the policy plan is nearly 100% implemented. Of the 189 goals, objectives, and policies, 45 are complete, 0 are not complete, and 144 are ongoing. The next few slides will show a few of the major policy planning accomplishments we've had in the prior fiscal year. Neighborhood revitalization policy 218 deals with walkable community plans. In the prior year, we have adopted the West Las Vegas Community Plan. We are ongoing with the development of the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan. The Department of Public Works has implemented, or I'm sorry, has implemented several items in the West Las Vegas area, including the sidewalk infill and the Meadows Plan area. We have done the Essex Circle and Meadows Lane improvements. Reurbanization objective 1.2 deals with improving the livability of the downtown area. Pedestral and bicycle improvements have been completed on First Street and Garris Avenue. A sidewalk infill project has been completed downtown east of Las Vegas Boulevard. Public Works is currently in the design phase of a series of improvements to the downtown bicycle pedestrian network on Third Street, Sixth Street, Main Street, Carson Avenue, Gas Avenue, and Coolidge Avenue. Economic diversity policy 4.1 deals with improving the city's economic base and diversity. Just two quick examples are the relocation of the online retailer Zappos and Take-Two Interactive Tech Company to the downtown area. Finally, economic diversity policy 417 promotes the medical district. The Southern Nevada Strong Initiative has identified the medical district as one of four opportunity sites where emphasis is placed on attracting new medical-related business, providing new residential opportunities, and providing ancillary and support services for the district. 2020 policy document future efforts, the current policy document was approved in the year 2000. The intent of a master plan is to guide policy for anywhere between 20 and 25 years. Our plan is nearly 15 years old. It's recommended that the city start developing a new master plan policy document sometime 2017 or 2018. Master plan element progress, the implementation of the 2020 master plan elements is approximately 95% complete. Of the 364 goals, objectives, and policies within 11 different elements currently, 48 are complete, 17 are not complete, and 299 are ongoing. In the past fiscal year, we have completed updates to the Parks and Recreation Element as well as the Public Facilities and Services Element. Walkable community plan progress, we currently have three adopted walkable community plans, the Meadows Area Community Plan, the West Las Vegas Community Plan, and the Sahara West Community Plan. Implementation of these plans are currently at 4%, as they're rather new. Of the 138 recommendations, five are complete, 96 are not complete, and 37 are ongoing. We have had some progress, though, towards these walkable community plans, and the Department of Public Works has constructed a few items within these plan areas that meet some of the recommendations from the plans. In the Meadows area, a new five-foot sidewalk along south side of Meadows Lane between Valley View and Decatur has been constructed. Two new mid-block crossings on Meadow Lane have been installed. New ADA accessible pedestrian ramps around Essex Circle have been installed, and four new bulbouts with pedestrian crossings around Essex Circle has been installed. As for the historic West Las Vegas Plan area, there has been a sidewalk infill project there, which have identified broken, cracked, unsafe sidewalks, as well as gaps in the network. They've replaced these gaps with compliant sidewalk. They have removed unnecessary driveways, and they have installed new streetlights where gaps in the streetlight network have been identified. The following few pictures shows an example of the before and after of the infill sidewalk. There's a portion of C Street on your top left, which shows gravel, no sidewalk, and on your bottom right shows after the infill improvements, you have the full sidewalk and it's a safe pathway for pedestrians. This final photograph shows some of the ramp improvements that were done in these infill areas. On your top left was a non-compliant ADA ramp, and then after the improvements, you see on the bottom right, you have the wider ramp, the truncated domes, and the ADA compliant sidewalk. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. Thank you, Mr. Solis, for the presentation tonight. I want to talk about goal number seven, which was regional coordination. And one of the items, policy 7.1.6, that the city coordinate with utility companies and other involved agencies to plan routes and locations for future utilities and to upgrade infrastructure in older areas. And then the action is, the city is in the process of working with local entities to establish utility corridors for above-ground transmission lines. One of the things that I'd like to see is that Southwest Gas, the Water District, the City of Las Vegas, Cox Communications, and everybody get together that way when we're ripping up streets and we're bringing in new infrastructure to downtown or anywhere else in the city. You know, we can take advantage of that street being ripped up and bring in new infrastructure for all the different utilities. And maybe there's a committee amongst Southwest Gas and the Water District and the City of Las Vegas that can be formed to make everybody aware of what's going on, because I've been working with Southwest Gas on bringing bigger transmission lines into our downtown area. And so anyways, that's just one of my suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Thank you, and I guess we, no need for a vote on this one. We'll go now into item number 61. Item number 61 is DIR 53939. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a presentation on the Downtown Centennial Plan Form-Based Code Project. Staff has no recommendation, and may we have a presentation, please?
Yes, Commissioner. Good evening, Robert Summerfield, Department of Planning, giving this presentation. All right, so about a year ago, actually June of 2013, we began a process to update the Downtown Centennial Plan. Specifically, as part of that update, we were looking at a couple of key things, the expansion of the existing Downtown Centennial Plan area and the adoption of a form-based code approach to the standards that currently exist within the Centennial Plan. Again, like I said, this process began with a PC workshop in June of last year. We also held an open house last October to get feedback from the public on the concept that we were initiating. We had three visual preference surveys that we launched in late 2013 that asked people what they kind of wanted to see with regard to sidewalk amenities, landscaping options, streetscaping, and those kinds of things. Then we began some stakeholder meetings with a very diverse group of stakeholders from the downtown area in November of 2013, and those concluded just this past February. And then during all of this, we've been working on draft transect standards for review and discussion, and as many people noticed at the beginning of the meeting, we've got our boards in the back, so folks can take a look at those. Those are all, to be clear, in draft form. None of those, none of the maps, none of the standards have been identified as adoptable yet, because we have a lot more work that still needs to be done. All right, so where do we get the direction for going forward with a form-based code approach? As part of the community design element of the master plan that Fred was just giving an update on the whole thing, one of the recommendations there is to use form-based codes to improve community design standards. This, so this is an adopted recommendation of both the Planning Commission and the City Council, and so that's what we're moving forward with. Okay, so one of the questions that we got quite abundantly when we were introducing this concept is why introduce standards for downtown? The first thing I want to make clear is we have standards for downtown. The Centennial Plan has quite a few standards, most of which relate to the public realm. The public realm would be the streets, streetscape improvements, sidewalk widths, things of that nature. What, excuse me, what the Centennial Plan doesn't address very much is how the buildings, the private realm relates to that street. And so that's what we're trying to do with a form-based approach, is relate that private realm to the public realm and create that urban environment that I think we all really want for downtown. On the slide that I have here, one of the things that I kind of want to show is, on the left, you kind of can see where we've got this context-busting building, where it's clearly a little out of proportion to the other buildings that are there. And what we want to do is, we want to limit that potential, and what we want is more of the right. And this is more of a contextual-based approach to development. You know, you still have variation, you have an older three-story building in there, but as you transition, you can see that most of the lines along there stay pretty uniform. And that's kind of the approach with a form-based code. But again, that doesn't mean that you don't advance, and you don't transition from maybe a lower intensity to a higher intensity type of development pattern. And I just, I came across this quote, I kind of like this, I think it's apropos to what we're doing. "A city is not an accident but the result of coherent visions and aims." And I think that's definitely the approach we've been taking, and that's where we're going with some of our next steps that I'll get into at the end of the presentation. Okay, so one of the things that I just wanted to visualize is, in this picture, you can see, if we leave things pretty much the way they are, you could potentially have this kind of almost hodgepodge of just unlimited height that maybe doesn't necessarily work for the city. Particularly if you look at the southern end here, that's in the Arch District. Do we really want that clutter of very tall buildings potentially within our Arch District, where we have very specific aims and goals for creating a particular type of district down there? Or do we want something maybe a little more appropriate, where our taller buildings stay within our office and our commercial core up north of downtown, and we have more appropriate buildings to the, to the south here? And to be clear, these buildings that are in the orange, these aren't the existing one- and two-story buildings that we have. These have the potential, based on the standards that we've currently kind of drafted, they have the potential to be up to five stories. So these are not necessarily small buildings in and of themselves. So there's a lot of potential here in terms of where we can go with standards, and this is just one visualization of that. Okay, so one other component of using a form-based code approach is that we have this, this breakdown of the public hearing versus an admin technical review. Under a form-based code approach, the Planning Commission and the City Council, in adopting that form-based code, have already said, if you meet standards, then you meet what we want, and therefore, you just go through an administrative review that staff does, just to make sure you've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. What that allows, though, is it still allows a good development that, for whatever reason, doesn't quite meet the standards that have been put in place, to still come through and through the public hearing process, justify why they think that their, their development proposal is appropriate for a particular area where they may not quite meet the standards. And so one of the other aspects of the admin review is it's much quicker than a public hearing process. And so when you have the public hearing process at the very beginning and adopt the standards, that makes the development process a whole lot quicker for projects that meet standards. And that's kind of just what this one is showing. Okay, so our next steps, currently, the city is in, or not currently, just recently, we put an RFP out to get a consultant or a team of consultants to work on a new master plan for the downtown Las Vegas. As part of that master plan, we will be studying transportation land use issues, thanks to some funding from the RTC, and we will also be looking specifically at the potential for a business improvement district within the core of downtown to help facilitate some of the, the improvements that some of our core businesses down there are looking for. That RFP just closed two weeks ago. We got an extremely strong response to that RFP, which included both local and national planning firms. planning firms and a number of team approaches, which was one of the things we were looking for. We're currently in the evaluation period. The evaluation team is made up of a diverse group of individuals, including city staff and stakeholders within the business community downtown. And we're hoping, as we move forward, we're hoping to award a contract sometime mid to late summer that will go before the City Council for their approval to award that contract. And then we're hoping to have that consultant onboard, ready to work by late summer or early fall, so that we can begin to make those connections with the downtown community and begin to get that master planning process started. What I want to make clear as a last component here is ultimately, the master plan and the form-based standards that would implement that master plan for downtown will be brought before this Planning Commission for your recommendation, prior to being forwarded to the City Council for their consideration. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Any members of the commission wish to be heard? Commissioner Boner?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts from your presentation, Robert. I'm wondering why the, the article that you had, the orange buildings down there, maybe that we can get that slide back up, why it doesn't work for you in some ways. I think by discussing, holding these standards that you're talking about, you're playing with land values that have already gone in a certain direction, and you're implementing a de facto height restriction, which is another thing that plays with land values. And you're actually talking about controlling density, intensity in a certain way that, what makes you the designer and the implementer of that, the US staff, that is, playing against the market forces that are out there? I'm a little, no, I'm not a little disturbed, I'm very disturbed that you're, that you're controlling things from the government side like that.
Okay. Well, to, to-
Actually, let me jump in there, if you don't mind, Mr. Summerfield.
Sure.
Government does control land use. Through our charter, we have the right to zone property and to subdivide property. And ultimately, the decision of the zoning standards that go in place are ones that are recommended by the Planning Commission and adopted by City Council. So what we are doing is putting forth a proposal. Ultimately, Planning Commission, City Council decide what those standards are.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
And, Mr. Chairman. And I think staff's done a wonderful job of presenting this, but it's still a pig in a poke. I've been to the stakeholders' meetings, I've been a vocal opponent to some of the processes here. The lack of development, the developers' understanding, the lack of understanding of true long-term municipal growth. Cities of the future do not grow horizontally, they grow vertically. And for the city to pick winners, like if I look at this, if you're down around the D, you're a winner. If you're down around the Arts District, you just lost value in your property. I think this will be the full employment act for the zoning attorneys in this community and those attorneys that elect to litigate zoning matters. And if the concept of something meeting the, the, all of our expectations, we should just let it go ahead, then we should let packaged liquor stores all up and down Fremont Street and keep our mouths shut and let it go. The market forces have nothing to do with this. This is wrong. We spent all this time in these neighborhood meetings, or these stakeholders' meetings, and in the twelfth hour, when it was supposed to be moved forward with a recommendation to the city, it came in, we found all this money, and we're going to hire this consulting team, and we're going to spend all this money. You had a great turnout for people wanting to do that because they want a government job, they want money from, to do a study. If they want to do a study, do it with their money and their property, not my money and my property. And I agree, the zoning rules in this community do dictate land use. But land use has never been a tool for technocrats to overwhelm the private sector. And if that's the community we want in Las Vegas, where we, we don't want the private initiative, we don't want the Steve Wins of this community, we don't want the Derek Stevens, we don't want even the stratosphere and all of their wisdom, or the, or the SLS. With this kind of thinking, we would not have the World Market Center, we would not have the outlet mall, we would not have a lot of the things that have helped keep this city going when people gave up on it. And I know that those that don't remember history are destined to repeat it. And if you weren't here when this city was being formed in the pioneer spirit, when the Binions and the Gons were building Fremont Street, and Bugsy Siegel was building the Strip, there's a lot that went into this. Some of our success is by accident, it's not all a great plan. Some of it is by people taking big gambles that they see the world a little different. Tony Hsieh has taken a gamble downtown. I may not agree with every project he's pushed forward, but if he couldn't advance a project for certain reasons, because we, we were trying to outthink the private sector, probably wouldn't be here. The kind of thinking that we wouldn't have a cra, it's not the prettiest building, but the old City Hall building. We wouldn't have a lot of things in this community if we didn't let the private visionaries, the private developers, the people spending their own money and their own passion to build a community. This is, you know, George Orwell on heroin. I mean, this makes no sense to me. And I've been doing this a lot longer than I think staff has, and I continue to do it. I continue to believe in Las Vegas. But I do not believe, when you look at this vision of the Arts District with little monopoly buildings that have no relationship to a greater city, in my opinion. That's not going to get you housing down there, that's not going to get you business down there. People that are going to think out of the box and come up with something that makes economic sense to their vision is what's going to build things. Yes, we do have a, a master plan here, we do have zoning laws, and we changed those master plans. But nothing has ever gone, to this point, in all the forty-some years I've been in Las Vegas, where we want to limit creativity because we want all the buildings on the block to be the same height. You go back to the picture that you had where there was a high-rise building. I can be honest with you, if that was my property, I want to be on that floor that's above the building next to me. I get to see the city then. I get a vision, and if I'm willing to do that, and I'm willing to create the right architecture, why shouldn't I have that right? If, if that isn't the kind of city we have, then we should wonderfully pass this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with Commissioner Truesdale on a lot of the different points, and I was in the stakeholders' meetings throughout this whole process. I, I'm still keeping an open mind to the whole form-based code, just for the, the main point of, we might not be able to figure out if this is a T-five, or a T-four, or T-three, and which transect we're in, which are all those brilliant terms that we learned during those stakeholder, stakeholder meetings. And we might, it, it might get messed up along the way. But I come from Dallas many years ago, where we had planned development neighborhoods, and we had three hundred PDs, and these different transects that you're planning on creating here remind me a lot of these planned development neighborhoods. And some PDs were four-square blocks and some were ten-square blocks, and it restricted it to a three-story or to high-rise, or this many trees in each yard, and kind of gave neighborhood identity. One of the things that makes me feel a little bit better about this is the fact that if you meet the conditions within that particular transect, which is, transect just basically means a little neighborhood. If you meet those conditions in that particular neighborhood, you bypass the, the Plan, Commission, and City Council, you automatically get an approved. One thing that's stuck in my mind from those meetings, and as long as this is true, and we've got to work out the details on this, because if you don't meet the requirements of that particular area, if it says it's a T-four, and you can go up to four stories or six stories, whatever the T-four is, and you want to build a high-rise, you'd still have the ability to come back to Planning Commission, as you do now, and, and would be able to review that particular project. I just don't know if that would come to us in the form of a variance. And if it comes to us in the form of a variance, what's our legal justification for being able to, can we legally approve something if it doesn't meet the code and there's no financial, or there's no, if this is self-imposed hardship? So we've got to work through a lot of these details over the next six months and a year as this form-based code is being, being drafted. But I, I do like a lot of the, a lot of the components to it, and one thing that I like the best is if we can administratively approve it, but I'm concerned about if staff really will administratively approve these projects, if they fit within that particular threshold of that transect. Because we have a threshold document in the Centennial Plan that says, if you meet these thresholds, then you don't have to go to Plan and Commission. And there are certain times where my projects or other people's projects had to come to Plan and Commission, even though it met that threshold. So I'd really encourage staff to have that flexibility and have, go ahead and make a statement that we will approve these administratively if they do meet the particular requirements of that, that transect or that particular area. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Mr. Summerfield, I just have one comment, and it's brief. There should not be a single building built in the City of Las Vegas, remodeled, and addition on top, whether it's twenty feet under the code or forty feet under the code, that a disabled patron should not be able to get to the top of that floor. And I'm putting it on the record right now, because it might not be the law, but we should be a city that's called common decency, common courtesy, and nondiscriminatory. And we have, we are, we are letting buildings go through under twenty feet, just so they don't have to put an elevator in, so that people don't get to go upstairs. And I'm ashamed that we don't ask people just to do it because it's the right thing to do, not because it's the code. And therefore, you, I will never support another building that does not meet all the requirements for a disabled person. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Director?
Let me just say one thing to finalize this discussion. Currently, in the Downtown Centennial Plan, we don't automatically apply any zoning restrictions. And so all reviews are discretionary. And so when a person comes into our office and says, what can I do here on this parcel? I have to say, I don't know, because it's subject to approval by Planning, Commissioner, City Council. Height, setback, parking requirements, et cetera. The idea with a form-based code is you have a base standard that is agreed upon, Planning, Commission, and City Council. Anything that meets that agreed-upon standard is approved automatically, goes through an administrative review. So that way, we have projects that have a surety of getting built without having to wait for a discretionary process. And anything that exceeds that would go through a discretionary hearing. So again, I just wanted to clarify that point, and I do appreciate all of your input on this matter this evening. Mr. Summerfield, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring pulled item number twenty-one forward. This is VAC 54050. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate public right-of-way Leon Avenue, north of Iron Mountain Road, and Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the adjacent development has been or will be constructed with no automotive access to Leon Avenue, thereby creating a street to nowhere, an orphaned street that serves no public purpose. Furthermore, orphan streets, orphan streets precipitate nuisance activities that would be detrimental to both adjacent communities, as well as it will generate costs to the city for maintenance of the improvements that serve no public purpose. For these reasons, staff recommends approval. Please note that within your backup materials, you will find the updated conditions of approval and staff report that accurately reflect the comments and suggestions given at the May twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen neighborhood meeting between the city and adjacent neighbors most directly impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Any of the commissioners wish to be heard on this? Commissioner Goines?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, just a comment. I'm going to have to abstain on this item, it's right in the notice area of, of my residence.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have any comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion to approve, item number twenty-one carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines. The other pulled item was item number eleven, which is SUP 53557. The applicant is New L. Portell LLC, and the owner is Oxford Technology, Inc. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor, off-cell use within an existing two-thousand-square-foot general retail store at twenty-three-ten South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 100, in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the convenience store is two thousand square feet in size, with fifty-six square feet of space used for the display of alcohol beverages. As this request meets all the minimum special use requirements and can be conducted in compatible and harmonious manner within, within the existing general retail use, staff recommends approval of this application. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Or, excuse me, I need to see the applicant. If you all state your names and addresses, please.
Molly Gabay, sixty-one thirty West Flamingo Road, number four oh two, eight nine, one oh three.
Sir?
Bruce Stoker, for Oxford Technology, fifty-ten South Valley View. Thank you. Tell us about your project, or what you're doing.
Um, well, I helped manage that gift shop that applied, and so we just, we opened not that long ago, probably about a year, and they applied for packaged liquor along with convenience, with the convenience store that they have.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to be heard, or?
I'm just representing the landlord.
Okay.
They're, they're an excellent tenant, and Mr. Gabay, the, the applicant, has a number of locations up and down the strip.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I asked this to be pulled off only to let the commissioners see this. There's an ongoing issue on Fremont Street that was predicated by having multiple packaged liquor locations consolidated in one area. And some of the solutions are to mitigate what can be sold, how it can be sold, when it can be sold. Right now, there are four in this area, and nothing's changed. Now, understand, I do own property across the street, I do have a tenant that is in that business, but they opened up as a liquor store, and it's always been a liquor store. And I'm not saying anything against this location, I'm not, I, I don't have a dog in this hunt, truly. But it, it appears to me that if we're going to start looking at liquor stores and packaged liquors and convenience stores in the Fremont Street area, because the consolidation and what happens with them, we should be open and bright enough to do this up and down the, the strip as it fits within the city. So that's, that was my comment. So that was my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number 11 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, item number 11 will go forward to the July 16 city council meeting, as will item number 21.
Good evening. Okay, now we're going to start with the regular public hearing items, beginning with related items 22, 23, and 24. Item number 22 is MOD 53701. The applicant owner is Queens Ridge Towers LLC. For possible action on request for a major modification of the Queens Ridge Towers development standards dated May 20, 2004, to amend development standards regarding land use, building setbacks, and stepbacks, building height, and parking on the south side of Alta Drive approximately 410 feet west of Rampart Boulevard in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 23 is VAR 53502. For possible action on request for a variance to allow a 582-foot building setback where residential adjacency standards require an 810-foot setback for a proposed 22-story residential tower, and staff is recommending approval. Item number 24 is SDR 53503. For possible action on request for a major amendment of an approved site development plan review for a proposed 22-story, 310-foot-tall, 166-unit multifamily building in a single-story, 33-foot-tall, 17,400-square-foot office building. Staff is recommending approval. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested complete the build-out of a residential condominium and office development near the southwest corner of Alta Drive and Rampart Boulevard. Phase 1 is complete and includes two 18-story towers containing 219 units. Originally, phase 2 was to include 166 units within one 16-story and one 14-story tower and a single 1,740-square-foot office building. Instead, this amendment proposes the construction of one 22-story tower with 166 units and an adjustment to the location of the proposed office building. The western edge of the tower has been stepped down and angled to mitigate the visual impact to adjacent residential properties. Concurrently, the approved Queens Ridge Towers development standards must be amended to allow for the additional height of the proposed buildings, increased parking demand, and reduction of the required building setback for the residential tower. The changes proposed by this amendment would reduce the intensity of the development and its impact to neighboring residential properties. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with conditions. For clarity, building height was determined by taking the vertical distance between the average grade along the front of the building and the highest point of the deck line of the mansard roof. The height was determined to be 266 feet as opposed to the 310 feet of height from the base of the parking structure to the deck line of the mansard roof. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicants, please? Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Chris Kemfer and Greg Borgel here on behalf of Queens Ridge Towers. Also in the audience, if you have any questions appropriate for her consideration, is Terry Murphy. In order to fully understand and fairly understand where we are now, we have to spend a little bit of time to understand how we got here. And there are a series of exhibits that I will be showing you and reading from. On the overhead, what you can see is the original plan for Queens Ridge Towers, as staff noted, showed four towers. And as you know, two towers were built, Mr. Borgel's pointing to those, and two towers were not. It was subsequently determined by the developer that the building of two towers would not be practical or economically feasible, so one tower is planned. Now, this one tower would be somewhat higher than and somewhat longer than either of the two towers originally proposed. However, the amount of units would remain exactly the same, and consequently, the required parking, as previously approved for the two towers, would remain exactly the same, as would any impact on schools and traffic and any other land use consideration that is impacted by density. The density is exactly the same as has always been represented and approved. Now, this new third tower was originally proposed at this location. And again, Mr. Borgel will point that out to you. And it is important to note the relationship in this next exhibit between the tower as proposed and the already-approved two towers. You can see how those two differ. The location of this new tower caused considerable consternation with some folks within Tower 2, the tower immediately adjacent to it. Consequently, meetings were held, ideas were exchanged, and the developer literally, not just figuratively, but literally, went back to the drawing board. As a consequence of these meetings that were held and the concerns that were raised, and at a very considerable expense, the single tower was moved to a location that in many ways mirrored the location of one of the two previously-approved towers. The exhibit in front of you now shows that new location. Candidly, when we moved it there, we thought we were done, and in fact, several neighbors expressed appreciation for us recognizing and addressing their concerns. I'd like to read and introduce to you a letter from Alan Sklar, who's one of the residents in the Queens Ridge Tower. He addresses this letter to Councilman Beers, but he's writing in support of the above- referenced proposed new development. And he states, "When the new development was first proposed during 2013, building size, scope, and placement presented significant concerns to us and other OQP condominium owners relative to privacy and certain other matters. As a consequence, the owner-developer conducted meetings with all and/or groups of owners. I anticipated that these meetings were largely for show and would not result in any meaningful changes to the plans to address our concerns because, quote, 'the ship had already sailed,' close quote, on the plans, and the owner-developer was far down the path. To our surprise and appreciation, as I now understand the new plans for the new development that have been presented for approval at your upcoming meeting, the most important concerns that Linda and I have have been addressed. As such, we support the current iteration of the proposed new development at or adjacent to OQP. I am aware that a number of my neighbors have expressed continuing concerns over the proposed new development, even as currently modified. For our part, though, we understand and ultimately, property owners must be permitted to develop in a fair and reasonable manner and believe that owner-developer has done so, and moreover, that it should be praised for its willingness to materially modify its plans in order to address the concerns of existing condominium owners at the project." Now, the next exhibit I'll show you is an overlay, and Mr. Borgel will point that out. Again, the red depicts the existing towers as approved. The yellow shows the location of the new tower as modified. As you can see, there's minor changes. It's a little longer and doesn't exactly fit the same thing, but that's because we want to do one tower and not two, even though the unit count is the same. Importantly, in recommending approval or of our application, staff notes, and I'd like to read that for the record. Although the same number of residential units is proposed, by removing the approved 14-story westernmost tower and replacing it, and the approved 16-story tower with a taller 22-story tower further east of the original location, the project becomes less intense than previously approved. The residential adjacency variance decreased from 58% of the 3-1 slope requirement to 28%. The proposed building would be angled in such a way that the western edge would be almost 600 feet away from residential properties and is stepped along the west side to be 40 feet lower than at the tallest point. And we appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and those comments. Now, one final point from me before Mr. Borgel waves in with his comments. As you know, your legal staff has made it clear on numerous occasions that views are not a protectable zoning interest. If that were not the case, then there would only be one hotel in an area, wouldn't have two hotels next to each other, there'd be no two-story homes adjacent to a single-story community, there'd be no schools or shopping centers next to any residences. So clearly, it's never been the case that views are a protectable zoning interest. It is equally and especially true in this case, because those who bought in Queens Ridge Towers were provided with a written public offering statement. This statement could not be more clear in several important regards. And I'm reading now directly from the statement that was given to each condominium purchaser. Developer generally declares as follows, that the maximum number of units that may be created in the condominium without prior approval of the association is 485. Interestingly, they're asking for 385, 100 less than they would be allowed to build. No assurances are given that the size of any building or improvement will be consistent with existing buildings and improvements. No assurances, no assurances are made regarding the location of any building or other improvement that may be constructed or made within any part of the condominium pursuant to the development Additionally, with regard to views, there is a specific section on views. Developer makes no representations as to the desirability or existence of any view from the unit. The currently-existing view from the unit may be changed at any time, either due to action taken by developer, affiliates of the developer, or any third party. Adjoining or adjacent structures that may affect the view from the unit may also cast shadows on the unit, which shadows like views from the unit may change at any time, either due to action taken by developer, affiliates of developer, or any third party. And as always, you know there are people who are going to say, "Well, assurances were given orally." That's covered by the developer's representations here. Purchasers may not rely upon any verbal representations, including specifically, but without limitation, any representations as to the existence of any view from the units, or that any existing view will not be obstructed in the future. Also, along those same lines, there is a declaration of condominium document, which the neighbors also received, and there is one, there are several provisions, but one in particular. Developers shall not be restricted in the location, design, or appearance of any improvements on the annexable land or the number of units that may be created on the land, except as may be required by applicable zoning requirements, ordinances, or regulations, provided that the condominium units when completed shall not exceed 485 total units. Now, that being said, it is extremely important to state that this developer did not rely on the law, or the fact that views aren't protected, or these documents when he dealt with these neighbors. He did everything he possibly could to address their concerns, those concerns that were raised by that group in Tower 2, to address their concerns, and at the same time, create a project for himself that worked both for, again, for him and for others to the extent that it possibly can. Now, while views are not a protectable zoning interest, I think you'd like to see and consider these following depictions. This is a view from Tower 1. That's the tower, Mr. Borgel. I don't think there, maybe we could go back and show, that's the one that's further away. Tower 1 is the one right there. This is the view as approved. That would be the view. Now, remember, we made our first proposal at a location that did not mirror where it was approved. That's the view from Tower 1 of what we initially proposed and to which most residents in Tower 2 had exceptions. This is where it is now, and that is the view from Tower 1. Now, I'd like Mr. Borgel to take that, together with the red, original view as to what was approved, and you can see for yourself. That is the view, and the difference in view, if you will, from Tower 1, with the top being what's already approved and the bottom being what we are proposing today. So this is not a situation where views have been adversely impacted. We've done everything we possibly can, short of going away, to maximize those views for people in Tower 1. I'd like to do the same thing with Tower 2. This is what was originally approved. That's what people in Tower 2, certain people, obviously others, depending on your location, see something entirely different, but this is where people who would be affected by the already-approved towers, this is what they would see. Now, when we proposed what we originally proposed and they did not like it, that is what they would see. Not to us, that was not a big difference, but they objected to that, and we respected that. So this is how the view is now with what we have proposed. Again, compare those two. Now, if somebody comes up here, and I know there will be people come up here and say their views have been adversely and substantially impacted by the difference between what was approved, when the city approved the two towers, and this, I have a different understanding of what substantial and adverse might be. Again, we've done everything we possibly can. So respectfully, very respectfully, even though views are not a protectable zoning interest, it is submitted that this developer has done everything he can to fairly and reasonably minimize any impact this development might have on the existing towers and on his other neighbors, which also have to be considered, his other neighbors to the west. Thank you, and Mr. Borgel, I know, has some additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. Mr. Borgel?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Greg Borgel, 300 South 4th Street. A couple of clarifications that are largely mathematical, I believe, but are helpful to everyone in the audience that may have created or have experienced someone telling them a different opinion. First of all, the notices went out saying 310 feet height on the new tower. That's not correct. You heard staff tonight say 266 feet is the corrected height. It's actually, we were very careful about calculating it, 265 feet, seven and a half inches. We understand staff rounds off to 266 feet. The difference there arose because in the exhibit staff was working with, somehow, the podium height was calculated into the height of the building, whereas the building is on a subterranean podium, so the subterranean part shouldn't have been counted. That's the cause of most of the difference between the 310 and the 266. But in any event, it is 266. Similarly, although not so precisely, the prior building on this site is represented to have been 201 feet. While the records of the city from that date don't permit me to give you an exact number, I will tell you that that was also on a podium, which was not wholly subterranean, and therefore, the true comparable height of that building would be greater. Another set of corrections, if I may, on page 6 of the staff report, there's a parking calculation. In the required parking, we are charged 73 parking spaces. In the required parking, we are charged seventy-three parking spaces for the existing clubhouse facility. That clubhouse is not part of this development. That has also been a cause of some concern to the neighbors, thinking that we're going to do something with that clubhouse and its parking. So those seventy-three parking spaces aren't needed because the clubhouse is not part of the project. So that would change the required parking number to below nine hundred. Similarly, the provided parking, shown as thirteen ninety-four, is in fact twelve sixty-three. And I guess I would just point out that we're still four hundred or so parking spaces over the requirement. There have been people who have been told that we're underparking the facility. We are, we're going to be four hundred parking spaces over requirement, but we did want those corrections in the numbers in the record so that you know what you're approving and so that when we hopefully get into plan check, someone won't say, what happened to the parking count? That's what happened. And so with those comments and open to your questions, I'm finished.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? If so, please come forward. I'm probably guessing we're going to have quite a few comments. I would ask you to keep your comments to two to three minutes. And we're ready, sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Larry Sadoff, and my wife and I are full-time residents at ninety-one oh one Alta Drive. In respect for the members here, I try to prepare my comments, and so I would not ramble and be specific, but I would want to say, to start out with, you will never hear the word "view" mentioned in my comments because that's not part of it. Nevertheless, we oppose approval of agenda items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, two of which are major modifications of the currently-approved longstanding Queens Ridge Development Standards and Site Development Plans. The salient and overriding issue for consideration before this commission is to determine if you should endorse major changes to the currently-approved plan, if in fact such changes are not more beneficial to the community. Nothing has changed within our community to warrant these requested changes. These changes will not benefit the community and in fact will create significant detrimental impacts that would not be experienced under the longstanding existing approved plan. Let me elaborate. On July seventh, two thousand and four, almost ten years ago, the City Council approved a plan for two eighteen-story towers, which were discussed, and the sixteen-story tower and the fourteen-story tower, for three hundred and eighty-five units, the same ones being requested right now. I'm sure approval was not without due consideration as to the impacts. On August eleventh, two thousand and five, a minor amendment was approved. No other significant changes have been made since two thousand and five. Thus, property owners in the community who made decisions over this ten-year period had the confidence and implied assurance of knowing that while development would and could and should be made on this property, restrictions would be regulated by the conditions approved by the City Council in two thousand and four. Simply stated, there is an approved plan in place for the development of this property. From a community and neighbor perspective, nothing has changed within our community that mandates major amendments to this approved plan. Nothing has changed. The gentleman there said these are minor changes. I don't think they're so minor. The requested plan calls for a twenty-two-story building and somewhat the same general footprint where the sixteen-story building was located. It is eighty-seven feet higher than the original plan, and with the land height differential, another fifty to sixty feet of height is probable. The proposed structure is twenty-five percent wider than the current plan. The new building has been reoriented. The approved plan allows for a hundred and sixty-six units in two buildings, while this proposed plan now puts a hundred and sixty-six units in one massive structure. This huge structure will be longer, higher, and wider than anything previously envisioned, and would be one of the largest, if not the largest, structures outside the Las Vegas Strip. It would overshadow the surrounding neighborhood. To approve such a structure without due consideration of appropriate shadow, wind, and traffic impact analysis is simply not prudent. The potential impact of shadows and creating a wind tunnel in the surrounding neighborhood is not insignificant and needs to be considered. The requested plan asks for a thirty-three percent increase in parking, at least when that was in the report. I guess that's a little less now, from ten forty-eight spaces to where the report said thirteen ninety-four, but I guess the gentleman there said it's twelve sixty-three. The plan for the entrance and exit of the master construction equipment and parking spaces, what could be many hundreds of construction workers, needs to be articulated. This is a major construction project in a residential area. Because of the potential of these impacts, I urge the commission to err on the side of conservatism and require the appropriate analysis be completed before any of these amendments are even considered. There are many legitimate unanswered questions and issues that need to be addressed before and to determine if any major changes are made to the existing approved two thousand and four plan. Two other points warrant consideration. First, it is a matter of public record that this developer is in financial distress. This is already affecting our neighborhood and community. Developer's steel structure iron shell for the new addition in Tivoli Village has remained erected, but in an unfinished state for many, many months.
Sir, if you're about four minutes, I need you to kind of wrap up real quick. Thanks.
Okay. I would, lastly, I would say, in summary, the requested changes to the original approved plans are not beneficial to the community and in fact have detrimental impacts. The only entity that benefits from these amendments is the developer, who sold most of the units on the adjacent property before requesting these major amendments. Numerous legitimate unanswered questions and concerns remain. Furthermore, to approve this request will provide a dangerous precedent for other neighborhoods. You now allow major amendments and modifications to longstanding previously-approved plans. When there are no changes within our community, the merit warrants these changes. Therefore, I am, and in my neighbors, urge you to deny these requested major amendments and the corresponding variance. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, sir. If you want to put your letter into the record, you're more than welcome to.
I will do that, okay.
If you can hand it to the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? And sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Frank Pancratz, ninety-one oh three Alta Drive, number eight oh one, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-five. I stood before members of the Planning Commission, chairperson, and those attending here, many of who are from One Queens Ridge Place. I stood before this body ten-plus years ago when I was part of the developer team. And as part of that presentation was JMA Architecture Studio Tom Schuman. And a lot of the time and attention and energy was spent working with neighbors and the various disciplines to make sure that the towers placements and their spatial reliefs and sizing were commensurate with the input we had received and what was good planning in terms of design and spatial relationships in this particular neighborhood. I'm before you today as a neighbor and a resident of One Queens Ridge Place. I'm no longer a part of the developer. What we have before us today with this proposal is a significantly increased length and height of a single, in a single structure. And it's not so much the height, but it's the length that makes a massive single structure. And combine that extra length with the height, it becomes a very expanded structure. One of the things that I'd like, the orientation, and I'm not here to talk about views, and I'm talking about sensitivity to neighbors to the east and to the west if the building is slightly rotated, because then these neighbors would more see the west end cap and the east end cap as opposed to the long expanded north and south sidewalls of this expanded building. I've got a couple of overheads here. I don't know quite does that show, or do I have to push a button, or?
Yes.
It shows? Does the green outline show? This is the developer's submitted plan to the city for this proposal. And what I've laid in here is if this building were a little bit rotated, about twenty percent rotated, again, it would show sensitivity to the neighbors because they'd see more the west and east ends of that building. And I know in a prior exhibit that the applicant showed their exhibit from Tower Two, what the impact of this structure, this longer and taller structure was going to be. And what I'm going to put here next is an exhibit that was prepared for Dr. Steve Thomas, and it was prepared by Carpenter Sellers Delgado Architects, based on information that was provided by the developer's architect. And the top part of the exhibit shows what the impact of that longer, taller south wall would be, as comparing to, the bottom exhibit shows what it was based on Tower Three's, approved Tower Three's orientation, being a shorter and not-so-tall building. So on this exhibit also are some lines. Back in February at the homeowners' board meeting, it was asked by the homeowners if the developer could stake the corners of the proposed building and the corners of the prior-approved Towers Three and Four, and mark their perimeters so they could have a sense and be able to visualize what they were going to see. And that didn't occur, but a couple of weeks ago, corner markers showed up for the proposed building. And as best I can tell, looking from the same vantage point, where the stake is, it's the yellow line. The red line is where the proposed Tower Three's southeast corner, southwest corner would be. The black line lines it up exactly where it was before. And the green line, because of the longer tail on this longer building, is where it would be, where I'm asking that consideration be given so that building rotate, so the neighbors to the west would see more of the west end cap as opposed to the significant longer and taller north side of this building, and the neighbors to the east would see more of the east end cap of this building and less of the longer south side, or at least not see that south side as impactful as it's going to be to the east side neighbors as was previously proposed. So unless there's any questions, that would be my-
Thank you, I appreciate it, sir.
My request. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Greg Bigler, nine-one-oh-one Alta Drive, number nine-oh-one-A. Just a quick note, I think there's been some issue as to how supportive the community, the current community, is of this new project. They, there was read a lengthy letter from, I guess, a Mr. Sklar, supporting this particular issue. I think the reason that that was so unique, and they spent so much time on that letter, was because it was so unique. I don't know that there's anyone who has those feelings today. Several of the people who met with the group here have since changed their opinions, including Dr. Stephen Thomas, who's my partner, and several other people. So I don't know that there's hardly any support for the position that's being currently held in spite of the fact that that has been projected to you that way. Number two, I'd like to follow up with what Larry said. Currently, as we walk through Tivoli Village, down the red rock to the neon path that's been put out there, as you walk back behind Angel Park Golf Course, to the right of that is a stash of all of the metal that's going to be put up in Tivoli Village. It's been there for about four or five years. It's all rusted. It's an eyesore. There are construction traders out there that have not been moved for four or five years. The proposal is to put several hundred condominium units in there. Now, I'm not sure where we're going with this, but the bottom line is that I think we're concerned about their financial ability to take this project forward. We don't want the same thing to happen that's happened to Tivoli, where they get halfway done, stop the project, and we get to sit and deal with that half-finished project. That's the extent of the points I have to make.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Come on up, sir.
My name is David Horowitz. I live at ninety-one oh one Alta Drive. And I just really want to reinforce the comments of previous speakers, that the representation by the developer, that the residents of One Queens Ridge Place were largely in favor with this. It's not the case, that I think many of us, as you're hearing tonight, do not agree with the statement indicating that letter, that people do agree with the developer's plans. I know many of us did purchase with good awareness, okay, of the developer's future plans, but we also knew it was subject to zoning. And I'd like to reinforce the point that Mr. Sadoff made, that before the Planning Commission, you know, changes or gives variance to the zoning requirements, they give very careful consideration to the comments Mr. Sadoff made about the work that needs to be done ahead of time. So thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll come on up and state your name and address, please. And if there's other folks that want to be heard, can you kind of move forward? And there's, yeah, we do have two mics. You can just set up at the next one and be ready to go. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Lauren Patterson. I live at ninety-one oh three Alta, unit seven oh one. I'm hoping that the body here will enforce their own regulations, if you will, that have been in place for years and years. I think they protect the neighborhood. The neighborhood needs protecting. What is proposed is a monster building. It's huge. It's way out of proportion with the rest of the buildings or the atmosphere of the rest of the neighborhood. I would hope that before you allow a major renovation to those plans that were made several years ago, you would think long and hard. Please consider the neighbors that have to deal with this monster that they're proposing to build. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll come up, please. And again, we do have a couple of mics here. If you want to be heard, if you can come up to the other mic and be ready to go, I'd appreciate it.
My name's Kevin Keating. I'm a resident at nine-one-oh-one Alta Drive, and I'm in the commercial real estate business and generally pro-development. I think the process with the developer and the residents has been somewhat confusing. And I would really appreciate if the Planning Commission would consider a timeout, maybe thirty to sixty days. What they're asking for is a variance. So we all signed off on a project, but it's changed. It's taller. It's wider. And we're not sure of the impact. And long-term, it affects us a lot. So I think, wouldn't the professionals in your group really want to take the time and consider, what's the impact upon wind? It's a much bigger building. Is it going to create a wind tunnel? Any large building in a downtown core would typically do that. Also, the shadow. I really don't think the developer has shown the shadow impact upon the building. And that's during the whole year, summertime, at different times of the day. Are we going to have daylight coming into the units, or is it going to be dark? They haven't shown us anything like that. And the views, it may affect us, some of us, it may not, but we really want to see these things. And he hasn't done it. I think he has good intentions. He's worked with some of the residents, but he really hasn't done his homework. And I don't think he's done the necessary work for you guys to say, go ahead and do it. The last thing is the traffic. So we've heard different things. At Queens Ridge, there's one gate with two entrances to come in. There's a lot of traffic in the morning, and there's going to be another tower there, there's going to be an office building, there's going to be parking in and out. No one's really looked at the traffic impact, so we've got a gate. Are we going to have cars jammed up all along Alta? Are they going to be able to cross? Are they going to stick coming up the street? No one knows that. So you're going to have potentially shadow, wind, traffic. And I would think you guys would want to really look at that seriously before just jamming this thing through. I mean, there really is no rush, guys. The developer's not going to build this for three to four years, and I think citizens would really appreciate if you'd give it a timeout, let staff look at some of these things, make the developer come back to the community and present to us, because they've sort of been all over the place. They've given us some information, some others, and it's been very, very confusing. So just as a citizen, I'd just like a little bit more study and a little bit more information.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you'll state your name.
My name is Sally Bigler. I'm in nine-one-oh-one Alta, in unit nine-oh-one, and that is the front building. I just would like to voice my concern that my husband and I did spend quite a bit of time canvassing the neighborhood. We took out some literature. We spoke with a lot of people that live in an area called the Tudors, which is a gated neighborhood that is directly impacted just to the west of this lot. They were all given these papers. However, it was never reposted again when this meeting was rescheduled. The original large poster board that's out on that lot still says May thirteenth- The original large poster board that's out on that lot still says May 13th, that was not updated. We did not go back and take our time to go back and tell them. I don't know if they ever received any notice, but there was a lot of interest from those people, saying that they were very concerned. Now, I don't know if they turned in their notices, but we were told as we looked up online that there was not a lot of objections, and I'm very concerned about what happened to those notifications, because I know with just the people that live in our two buildings and the folks that are here, we sent a lot of these in. And I need, we need to know where those are, because there were objections that were mailed in to you folks. Secondly, one of the things that was mentioned was the parking. Right now, the owners of that lot behind us, the developers, have padlocked the gate with a big no trespassing sign. This is where all of our vendors, our construction workers, painters, carpet cleaners, household help, nannies, dog walkers, all of the people that are support staff to the people that live in these buildings, this is their place where they park. There's very limited parking there, we have a visitors' area, we have a valet area. In the event that we have parties, events, where sometimes there is one hundred, one hundred fifty, two hundred people invited, we now have no parking. Now, granted, that is their lot and they can do what they wish with it, but it is a problem. So now we're looking at, okay, where are we going to park? We've been locked out of there. So they're just, right now, I would say, being bad neighbors. They've locked us out, we can't use the parking lot. Our HOA Director, Rich Govitz, sent us a note saying, I don't know where we're going to park all of the staff. So, right now, just being bad neighbors, they have locked us out and they have put in a trespassing sign up, just to let you know how they're treating us, just wanted you to know that. The egress and ingress is also concern. We have one gate, and that backs into Alta on the curve. Now, as we come and go, my husband and I are walkers, bike riders, often, certain times of the day, those cars back out and they are on that Alta curve where the speed limit is thirty-five, but it is not usually, people are not usually going thirty-five around that curve. So I perceive that as a real issue there. There is a light, just directly to the west, that maybe that would be a better egress and ingress place for these new tenants to utilize their building. Last thing, I just wanted to say that for like several years, we have been looking at this development from its inception, we went through it in hard hats many, many years ago. We spent a lot of time in the offices, there are fancy offices that were down on Charleston, they had all the models and the mock-ups, and all of their real estate people who were agents of the developers telling us what was going to happen there. We were not told the truth. Now, I guess somewhere in those fine lines, all of these things that were said today must be in those documents, but that was not what, in good faith, was verbally told to us. That was not what was shown to us. We were shown that there was going to be four identical buildings, similar heights, similar architecture, so we would be a cohesive neighborhood. Now, they're changing the game. So they're saying, well, you know, we can do that, and Section Two, blah, 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 all this little fine print. Okay, well, that's not what the agents that they hired in their fancy office building told us. They showed us models and they said, this is where they'll be, this is what they'll look like. Now, it's a whole new story. So, anyway, I don't know if we can trust them at this point, I haven't seen any definitive pictures of what the exterior will be like, is maybe it's anything goes. Maybe it will be some ultra-modern building, whatever is cheaper and easier for them to build. Just a thought, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Johnny Adams, I'm a resident also of 9101 Alta Drive. I don't want to be redundant, but I certainly concur with all the views that have been presented in reference to the new proposal. I would also like to add that, from a layman's standpoint, not understanding most of what is said is forged, is the different angles and et cetera, I do know what was told in the reference of two towers being built and how they would be uniform. And I must say, being a transplant from Los Angeles, the Queensbridge community is a very beautiful, one of the best that I've ever seen. But to see a monster, a building of this type being constructed would change the whole appearance. And in some events, sometime, one building is not better than two that was proposed earlier, and especially if it's just for economical reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Noel Gage, 9103 Alta, I'm also a resident there. I know views are nothing that needs to be considered by you, as you've stated before, but you should consider something called an eyesore. And if you drive down that area and you see this steel structure, empty with, I thought I saw one man working on it, I did see a rat there on the corner for quite a while, that was the most attractive part about it. Is that what we're going to be looking to in this new structure? Please consider that, the residents consider that, the ones that put you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Selka, 9103 Alta, Unit 1601. So, my particular unit will be directly impacted. I haven't met the developer, I've never been contacted, I have more than one residence, so I wasn't here for that meeting. But like others, I was told about the two buildings, I was shown various views of that they could slightly relocate those buildings, but no one said, hey, they can just get variances from planning, from city council, and build whatever they want. They can have a tremendous economic impact on you and the investment that you've just made. And when you have that kind of an economic impact, it's pretty easy to predict where this is going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Terry Chase, I'm a resident of Tower One, 1202. And I just want to say, as late of November of this year, that's when we bought the unit, the real estate agents that handled that, that were paid by the developer, were touting that we were going to have two more buildings built in that lot. So that was five months ago, and then all of a sudden it changed. What I know about the construction and the planning that went into this ten years ago, or whenever it originally was done, I mean, that was well-planned out, a lot of thought, and I think they had a really good plan. And the two towers that are there right now are optimal, I mean, they're wonderful. Now, it's interesting to note that there was some negotiation that went on with residents, some residents, a few residents of Tower Two. And all of a sudden, the developer moves the building. Now, that's not indicative to me of a well-fought-out, well-planned construction project. I didn't know they had, I was in Tower One, I didn't know that that conversation was going on. They didn't ask what Tower One thought about that movement of the original plan. So I think a lot of the residents, both in Tower Two and Tower One, are sort of in the dark here. You've seen a lot of changes, and I just don't believe it's well-thought-out. And it's not anything like the original plan, that I think a lot of money and development energy went into. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Leonard Swimmer, 9103 Alta Drive. We had met with the builder to try to have a meeting in the minds, and at the offset, he basically said he can do what he wants, and that's the way it's going to be. The gentleman that was speaking for the builder that said it was the people in Tower Two, if you notice the addresses that people objected to are both in Tower One and Tower Two, and I understand, and I could be wrong, that the original plan for the new two buildings that were going to be, one sixteen, one fourteen-story, was close enough to the clubhouse that the builder would have to pay at his expense a million dollars to move it. And that could be a reason why some of this went on, that the building was moved. And it's going to be a nightmare, both traffic going through that one entrance, and you're talking about the amount of homeowners, it's going to cause a traffic jam, the people are going to be shocked. And, like they said, if you could take the time and put it off so you can do a feasibility study of the wind and the traffic and everything else, it would be appreciated by the constituents of this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, if you could state your name and address, please.
My name is Alan Diamond, I reside at 9101 Alta Drive, that's Tower One. I just wanted to make a point that I think the developer has been fair, he had two meetings with us in the building to discuss the plans. When the plans were changed, we met with the developer again to show the new plans. So I do think that he's bent over backwards. I also think that most of the concern of the homeowners was based on the view, and this evening we've learned that the view really is not, shouldn't be a concern of ours, we're renting the view. And I don't think that all of the residents are opposed to this project, I think just the ones that, most of the people here tonight are opposed to the project, a lot of people are back at the towers who are remaining silent on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello, my name is Frank Pontillo, 9103 Alta Drive. I came to Las Vegas when it was not fashionable to move here, the town was in distress. We believed in Las Vegas, we came here knowing that there was a future for myself and my family. We believed what the realtors told us, we understood that someday things would turn around. Now, I'm told today that my property value can be depleted from this huge building, which is larger than the Suncoast Casino, which is going to be going next door. I came here believing in Las Vegas, I came here believing what I was told. The young lady here used words like courtesy and consideration, there was none given to us, we didn't expect this, we didn't anticipate it, but we do believe in the community and we do believe that you, the commission, will do the right and fair thing for us. We're hoping that you reconsider what is going on here and think about this as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you could state your name and record, please.
Good evening, Steve Bell, 9103 Alta Drive, Unit 301, a resident also. Just wanted to state for the record that I have sent in my opposition to these variances, I have met with the developer to discuss these changes, he did make changes, and for that we're grateful. However, I think that the view issue has been very minimized, in that when I made my original purchase of this residence, the units in Tower Two, which would be the westmost building, there was a premium for the view, and being in Tower Two, as opposed to the same westerly viewing units in Tower One. I think that should be put on record. The communication overall, I feel, has been not as strong as it should have been, and I personally found out about many of these variances, or requests for variances, through different neighbors. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the Commissioner Bonar?
Good morning, Chair. Gee, there's so many, so many items. Before I talk any detail, I think I'd like to see if I can set the tone of what we're looking at. We're looking at two sets of two towers, which was the original and currently approved development plan. One set of two towers, and then a larger third building with never to be a fourth building. And that third building has several locations where it could be placed, including the one that's been proposed tonight, and some other variances of that third larger building. I think I'll take the first swipe at views and wind studies, they won't be considered. Traffic has to be considered, it's one of our normal items, it has to be considered. Since the unit count didn't change, I can imagine that any update, and there will be an update of a traffic study, I can imagine a significant change will take place. If that update calls for more signal change, more additional signal, traffic signals, different lane designations, that will come out of a required traffic update. No one's mentioned drainage, there will also be an update to the drainage, as to how this repositioning of a building might affect the drainage solutions. What I'd like to have, and I don't see them in the audience, is the original architect to, although the firm is represented, to tell us the thinking of the layout of the four-tower solution, which I frankly, I like the four-tower solution. Frankly, if I had my choice of the third larger building, it would be the one originally proposed with this amendment, and not the one that's been moved to by Mr. Bankrantz or the current compromised location. But it's not my choice, and the developer has the right to request these amendments, and it's our obligation to review those requested amendments. And that's what we're doing here tonight. Before I go any farther, though, I would like to ask the fellow commissioners for their thoughts, so I don't override what they might be thinking of asking for their questions. So if I could give temporarily up the- thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you very much, and thank all of you for your input and your emails, and I want each and every one of you to know that we take this very seriously. And I think the Turnberry Tower project taught me very well, because I had many friends that really lost their view. And when I look what this developer did, in my opinion, is they set it up, in fact, to do the least evasive view loss that they possibly could do for you. Whereas in Turnberry, people lost their view. This developer, in my opinion, did the very best they could for you by laying them out the way that they could. That's number one. Number two, I do believe a traffic study should be done, has one been done, Mr. Borgell?
Yes, ma'am, and Commissioner Bonar is correct that since the numbers won't change, we wouldn't think that any update would change the traffic situation, but an update is expected.
Okay. And so, with that in mind, I just think that, you know, unfortunately, when we buy something so glorious and so grand, we're not buying the view, we're buying the space, and we're buying the place we're living in. And this developer, in my opinion, has bent over backwards to ensure that people didn't lose more view than they already had. My other question is, Mr. Borgell, is we have five or six people that were very informed in Tower One or Two, and then we have people that never knew about a neighborhood meeting or heard about it, and then that nice lady, Mrs. Bigler, said that the people to the west thought the meeting was in May. So I want to know if, in fact, is that true, that only a select few people were notified to come to your meetings? And also, were the people directly west of your building in that development, that's so cute, were they invited to these neighborhood meetings?
We attempted to notify any, everyone of interest, originally. Subsequent meetings were held with specific groups who had expressed interest, so everyone didn't get re-invited to each meeting. On the question of who might have been invited from the west, I'm going to have to defer to the person who handled that, and so, the person who handled that?
Hi, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening, Commissioners, Terry Murphy, 516 South Sixth Street. A meeting was held in October with all of the residents in both Towers, we invited all of the residents in both Towers. We invited all of the residents in both towers. We sent invitations to all of the residents, whether they received them or not, we don't know.
What about that nice neighborhood right behind it?
The neighborhood to the west. We had a neighborhood meeting just subsequent to that. So we had two meetings in or around October. After we were requested to make the change to the building that is before you this evening, once all of that was done and we had met with the group of neighbors who requested the change, we then re-noticed everybody in the both towers. We did not re-notice the neighbors to the west because actually, it's even further for them. So we did not re-notice them. The meetings weren't required. We held them because, we held them.
Right.
So there were two completely noticed meetings for the residents in the towers. One completely noticed meeting for the residents to the west. And then as many smaller meetings as were requested by individual neighbors met with the developer and myself.
Let me ask you, Ms. Murphy, at the meeting, when the neighbors to the west of the property we're talking about today, how many people showed up from that neighborhood?
Approximately 20. I'm going on recollection, but approximately 20.
How did that go?
It went fine. Nobody had a problem.
Because I have 50 or 60, you know, complaints and emails and things, and none of them are from that neighborhood. They're all from the existing buildings. So those are my questions. And I, sometimes you have to really give kudos to a developer that could have built it the other way, could have had the fourth tower and really screwed everybody, but instead, he, in my opinion, tried to do what was best for everyone. Whereas in Turnberry, people lost every view they had. And I don't see that here. And that's just my opinion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. Mr. Borgel, do you have a, do you have a site plan showing the position of the old layout versus the new layout?
Yes, sir.
And I have the new layout on my screen, just so you could put up the previously approved layout.
The original layout, is that what we're looking for, Commissioner? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Here's Tower One, Tower Two, the original Tower Three, the original Tower Four. This is the, what we would call the original layout.
Okay. I am looking at this and I know this building might be a little bit wider, but I just can't see how this, looking at one screen here and looking at the other screen, how this is going to affect a view any greater than the original layout. Could you, through the chair of, Mr. Borgel, if you would tell me, what was the height again of the previous building?
Well, first of all, answering your first question, this is an overlay that shows both the original layout and the new Tower Three. So Tower One, Tower Two, the original Tower Three, the original Tower Four, and this in yellow, the new Tower Three. So I guess I'm trying to concur with your opinion that there's not a significant difference in the location of Tower Three, the new Tower Three versus the old Tower Three. With regard to the heights, it is not 310 feet, it's 265 feet, seven and a half inches. Staff rounds off to 266. The prior Tower Three, because of the city records in the matter being not as complete as I think we all would wish, the building height is reflected in your agenda as 201, but that doesn't take account for apples and oranges comparison of the fact that our podium is fully below grade, which is how we calculated, someone calculated 310, whereas the podium on the other property is not fully below grade. Now, what exact number that comes to, I think there are a number of possible calculations because of the grade difference, because of the four sides of the building, but it is more than 201 by a significant amount. The maximum it could be, I think, would be 238. But we're not, our point is, it's bigger than is represented and we're smaller than was represented.
Mr. Borgel, just to sum this up, you threw a lot of numbers out there. It sounds like it's somewhere between 30 to 50 feet different from what was previously.
I think that's accurate, Commissioner.
Okay. And then, the previous buildings that were constructed, do you know how many stories those are?
The existing 18-story towers, One and Two?
Yes.
If they didn't build them at 18 stories, they fooled me.
Okay. So they're 18 stories. And previously approved for buildings Three and Four?
16 and 14 stories. But again, we're dealing with building on podiums that raises the heights of those and doesn't raise the heights of ours.
So pretty much these would have been level or close to the same height, all the way across all four buildings?
Well, of course, a word like "close" enables me to say yes. They would have been a little below.
So, I don't know. I don't know if this was just a calculation error that, when we were originally saying 301 feet, that brought so many people out. But looking at this, looking at the rendering or the site plan that you have showing the previously approved and what's currently approved, and I just can't see how this would affect anybody's view any greater or lesser. And for the most part, it could affect some people's view even more if you build the two previously approved buildings versus what we have. So I'll listen to what my other fellow commissioners have to say.
May I ask just one more quick question through you? Just a quick one.
Sure, go ahead.
Very quick. So the other two buildings, they don't have businesses on the bottom, but this one will?
No, there's no.
You were talking about business rentals on the bottom for?
No, there are no business rentals that I'm aware of in the bottom of the existing two towers.
No, the new tower is going to have business rentals?
No.
Commissioner, with your permission, Terry Murphy, there will be no business at the bottom of these towers. This is a pre-approved office building on this portion.
Oh, I see. Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments, and I'll be real brief. I resoundingly hear it's the view, it's the view, it's the view. And I think we clearly established that you can't regulate the view. And so that seems to be the issue from the neighbors. But I think Mr. Kemfer clearly read into the record what was agreed upon and what everybody signed. Then we have a gentleman that comes up and says, "Well, we signed that, but now we're not happy with that." But that's what you signed to. And what it said is that in the future, there may be some development. In the future, we as the developer have the right to move it or orientate it. We have the right to make the change. And people sign for it. And so now, everybody can't play together in the sandbox and we're all squabbling over something that's a view that we can't regulate. So it seems to me is that the developer has done everything proper. He's brought it before the city. It's been vetted by the department. It's been recommended for an approval. And so I think we need to work from there forward. I don't think this is going to have an adverse economic impact to the area. For God's sakes, it's Queens Ridge. I mean, it's, if I break it down into normal terms, it's money. It's a whole lot of money. A whole lot of money is not going to suffer no economic impact. Economy's coming back. Things are looking better. You'll be fine with this development five years down the road. But what's funny is, before the development was even brought forward with the first two towers, we heard the same, it's that NIMBY approach, you know? We heard from other neighbors that came in that didn't want Tower One and they didn't want Tower Two and they thought, but then when it's built, you've got to go see Queens Ridge. It's the best thing up there in that area. And so I think if we, as neighbors, continue to communicate with the developer, continue to go to the meetings and let this thing be developed, I'm sure down the road, you'll be pleasingly pleased and you'll see the economic value soar up in this area. That's just my comments. And that's coming from a poor boy out of Ward Five.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few comments. I think I've been on the Planning Commission for four or five years now and I don't know that I've ever heard a more savvy, informed and articulate group of people come out in protest. I've appreciated your comments. I have to agree that a lot of this does come down to view, but the one concern I do have about a view came from Dr. Bigler, who talked about the possibility of seeing a partially constructed building. And I just hope that there can be some assurance that these neighbors can have that if this goes forward, that it's going to be completed and completed in the same fashion as the existing buildings, something they can be proud of and when they're looking out their windows, that they can see something that's nice and equal to their investment that they've made in this. This is a tough vote for me. Still not sure. So I'm still looking forward to hearing from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Truesdale?
You know, surprisingly, when this project first came before us, I sat on the Planning Commission. I lived a few blocks from here and I expected an unbelievable outrage from the residents of Queens Ridge, the custom homes, the Tudor Building, everybody out there. I expected it to be the biggest outcry in opposition ever. There was some concerns. There was some voices out there that didn't want anything built. But the developers presented a complete package and it went forward. And I think Buildings One and Two delivered everything that the neighbors promised. In that regard, I commend the, you know, the development team originally. I understand the changes. One of the individuals talked about taking a timeout. Well, I think the market took a five-year timeout. And it will be a little while before that timeout's over, but that's the market. Again, I listened to the development team that's before us over the last couple of meetings and listening to the neighbors. And there's concerns like anything, what if it's never built? Or what if it's never finished? You know, you could have believed, everybody said that the first towers would never get completed. One would be half-built and the other one would be a skeleton and, but yet, in our community, we do see projects that don't go as planned. A good example of that is Fountain Blue. You know, best intentions in the world is there. But again, these developers have presented all the right information. Now, can there always be better communication? Yes. Can there be ongoing communication? I think there should be. But what I am surprised here is, in all the calls and in comments I got from people with regard to this item, I received nothing from the Tudor people. And I know several people that live over there. I know they were noticed, but I didn't see this array of, "No, don't change it, don't do anything." And they're impacted. I talked to a lot of people along Orient Express and a couple of the other streets in Queens Ridge. Not one of them voiced a concern about this. And not one of them voiced a concern that they didn't think this was going to improve. And they have individual homes that are five, four, five, six million dollars invested. I know people invested equally large amounts on these two, first two towers, and it's an amazing project. Out of all the things that were built over the last 10 years that were a stretch, these two towers came together. And I'm shocked by how vibrant the community is and the amount of people that show up. They're engaged in their community and really have asked and expected a lot of answers. But I have to go back to a couple of things. The, whether the original agents, if it was salesmanship, it was outright lies, anybody goes into a sales center, they hear what they want to hear. If they love the project, they will hear what they want to hear about that project. But when it gets down to it, everybody out there had to sign a disclosure on what's, what could happen on the adjacent parcel. I built a home in Canyon Fairways. Howard Hughes, you know, major developer here in town. I had to sign on my deed restriction that half the project may never be built. I argued for days with the attorney. He goes, "Don't buy the property. That has to go in there. We don't know what tomorrow will bring. We don't know what changes building codes could force upon us, the market." So I would hope the communication from a developer's perspective and the neighbors would continue. And I would hope that the feeling and assurances of the quality of development will be reaffirmed to the neighbors because I think you have a great community. But without this outpouring from people around here saying that there's something changed and, honestly, if you live in any other part of Queens Ridge, the orientation of this building might affect you. Not that we're going to take that into account, but it might affect you. But none of those people are here. The people are here, are in the building. And I didn't look at each address and see what, where you sat on the floors and what you currently experienced. But I don't think any of you can say your quality of life is less than what you desired when you went to Queens Ridge, One and Two. Because it's amazing when I go in there to meet with people. But I think what's before us tonight, we could move this building 100 times on this parcel. We could tweak it every degree. And every time we do that, we'll find more that like it and more that dislike it. We can do wind studies. And wind studies could be, could show something. There's a difference between four buildings and three buildings. But I think the developer is obligated to deal with the traffic, obligated to deal with the parking. They're not going to sell the units if they don't deliver the product, which was inherent in the first time this development came before us. So it is a tough call. I know a lot of the people that are here tonight in opposition and I know a lot of the people are in support. But I can tell you, you have a great community and this is a chance to finish that community and bring it to its completion and its full energy. And I would hope the developer get an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I guess I get the last word. I agree with what a lot of my fellow commissioners have said tonight, especially what Commissioner Truesdale just said. This is a close call. I live fairly close to the area. I drive by this roughly about 10 times a week. It's one of the more beautiful corners in Las Vegas with the Pacoli and the Boca Park and a lot of the other developments that are, that have been built around that area. And I've received a lot of emails. I've had a lot of discussions on this, the presentations by the folks that are in opposition to this, well researched, well prepared, got some very valid arguments. However, we are a land use board. And as Commissioner Bonar said a little while ago, this isn't about views for us because we're not here to determine whether or not you get your view or you don't get your view. We're not here to deal with, you're going to have increased wind from a wind tunnel effect or anything like that. And we're not really here to deal with what a Realtor or real estate company who was selling you your particular unit may or may not have told you. That's not really our issue. I sympathize with you if that, if those were some of the things that happened to you, but it's really not what we're here to do. But what we are here to do is to say, is this a, you know, viable project? It's been like, as I think a couple of commissioners said, it's been vetted, it's been, you know, there's been a lot of give and take, it seems, to get this thing done. I think if it's built and it's built properly, it's going to be a tremendous project for the area. Now, one of the things Commissioner Bonar said, which I have a question about, maybe Mr. Borgel can help me, is can you show me how traffic is coming in? Mr. Borgel can help me, is can you show me how traffic is coming in and out here? Because traffic is probably the primary concern that we may have in trying to figure out whether or not to approve or disapprove of this. And my understanding, there's really just one way to ingress and egress out of the whole development, and I may be mistaken. Maybe you can show me.
Yes, sir. You're correct. There is, always was, and is still proposed to be, a single entrance here in accordance with the previously approved traffic study. We understand we'll have to update that traffic study, but as I responded with Commissioner Quinn's question, since the unit count doesn't change, there's no reason to suspect a significant change in an update of a traffic study. It's conceivable, of course, that there would be a change, and we're agreeing to do an update, but the plan is not to change anything.
See, I've had a couple of discussion with folks on this, and what they're concerned with right now is peak times. They get home from work about five or six, and they get in the queues to make the turn. And there's 10 or 15 cars backed up trying to get in the place. And I know we have a traffic, we're not increasing the density, but even right now, it seems like there's some problems coming in and out, and you're going to add another 166 units. I'm going to encourage you all to really look at that hard, see what you can do to fix this thing. Because right now, I think you do have a problem ingress and egress from your development. I'm not saying that's all day, but I think you got a problem during peak times because of the amount of folks coming home from work or coming home from whatever they do during the day. And so I would encourage you all to try to figure this one out and address that better. May have to recut those islands out there or some kind of, do some lights, but with all due respect, I think the traffic study that was done way back when, I don't think it's still valid now, especially if you're going to add 166 more units. Last, you know, so I encourage that. Lastly, what I would encourage you to do is you got a lot of people here that do have some concerns. You're going to have a month or two before you end up in front of the city council, so I would highly, highly recommend you talk to a lot of these folks, see what you can do to alleviate some of their concerns. I see a lot of people here, and I think these folks need to have their voices heard somewhat and see what it is. Maybe if you talk to them, they won't have a concern. I've heard a lot of people who did have concerns change their mind after talking to you. So it might not hurt to have another meeting to get that done. So anyway, I appreciate everybody's presentations tonight, and I appreciate the applicant's presentation, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, building to that motion, let me say that I've heard from people I never heard from before, from old acquaintances that I didn't know lived in the towers, and pleased to hear from them. And they've all voiced their concerns, some saying just plain outright. And I've also heard from people in the Tudor neighborhood, so somehow they got ahold of me, and darned for having my contact information on the web. But with that said, I'd like to make a couple motions, the three that were involved. I'd like to say that anybody who has had a resale unit purchased after the original certainly had to have their closing papers include whatever was signed at the original sale, so if they failed to read that, shame on them. But that was already there. I would like to also suggest that if there are decel lane or decel lanes to help the traffic issue for stacking, getting into the project, that should be emphasized. What we have is, is the applicant with the right to request these changes. He's done so. He apparently wants to change from what was already approved. It's our obligation to consider that. I think the questions that have been posed, both professionally, in terms of aesthetics, and in terms of what the mechanics of traffic and all the underground services, parking, are all going to be designed through the re-study process. And my hope is, because I don't know if we can legislate this, that the same quality of design, construction materials, and implementation during the development stage are just as cautiously adjudicated as can possibly be done. Be kind to your neighbors, be kind to your existing tenants, and your future residents will also note that you've done an excellent job that way. With that, I'd like to move for approval of Item Number 22, MOD 53701, major modification with all staff requirements.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve, Item Number 22, Carries.
And Item Number 23, variance, VAR 53502, like to move for approval, again with all staff requirements.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Before we vote, a quick question. Is this what's before us, has that got the corrected heights and figures? Or was there any?
I may want to amend.
The building height verification, is this correct?
I guess the answer is the variance doesn't affect that, Commissioner. So we can maybe say, ask the same question on the SDR.
All right. You got it.
So please vote. Motion to approve, Item Number 23, Carries.
Item Number 24, move to approve, SDR 53503, and including all staff requirements.
And responding to Commissioner Truesdale's prior request, we would ask that that motion does include the corrected height number of 266 and the corrected parking numbers, which we ask be entered in the record.
If I may so direct the motions to observe that correction, I'd add that to my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve, Item Number 24, Carries.
And Items Number 22, 23, and 24 go forward to the July 16 city council meeting.
Thank you very much, and we also think we owe all of our neighbors a thank you for working with us all over these months, even though, as is pointed out, we don't always fully satisfy everyone. We've worked hard at it, and we appreciate their civility and willingness to work with us.
You need to turn your mic on, Mr. Kemfer.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, a request has been made. If we could have it the first meeting in August, we do intend to continue to work with our neighbors. We give you that pledge, and I do know from vacations and other things, it might be easier for us to accomplish those additional meetings if we could have it the first meeting in August, if that would be okay.
Mr. Kemfer, what I would ask that you do is submit a letter requesting the August date.
Okay.
Submit that to the clerk's office and to our office, and we'll go ahead and notice accordingly.
All right. I'll do that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a short break. We'll be back in about 10 minutes.
I'm just wondering if I could go out and get if I can eat.
I think you've probably got forty-five minutes, at least one hour.
Sounds right.
That's just a guess, though.
Sounds right.
If I'm back by nine, I'm probably pretty cool on that.
Think so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll hold it there.
Yeah.
Hold as long as possible, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
So, I'll say that you were right.
If I'm back by nine, it's still my... For thirty-one, I could go home.
If you have opposition, the audience won't like it, but we might trail you if you aren't back on.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody. There is?
We'll trail for you.
I appreciate that.
And we'll let you live with the wrath.
Thank you.
which is SDR five-three-four-three-five. The applicant is Ernest Patton. The owner is Prayer Center Revival Ministries. For possible action on request for a site development plan review for a proposed seven-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-eight square-foot church house of worship with waivers to allow reductions in portions of all landscape buffering requirements at thirteen-sixteen and thirteen-fifty-two Miller Avenue and thirteen-twenty-nine West Carey Avenue in Ward Five, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, there are three lots containing an existing sixteen-hundred-and-seventy-three-square-foot church house of worship and an undeveloped lot and a vacant building at thirteen-sixteen Miller Avenue and thirteen-twenty-nine West Carey Avenue. This request will allow the site to be cleared and new construction to occur. Five-perimeter landscape buffer waivers and two exceptions to allow the reduction in parking lot landscape islands and parking lot vegetation are requested. The applicant has mitigated the reduction in landscape buffer width and the number of landscape islands by providing more trees and shrubs overall than is required by code and varying the type, quantity, and spacing throughout the site. Staff is in support of the requested site development plan review and associated waivers and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant, please? Good evening. Could we have your name and address, please?
Michael Hatt, thirteen-sixteen Miller, two hundred and thirty past. The church, and the developer couldn't be here, so I was coming to stand in instead.
Thank you. Does any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst commissioners. Commissioner Goines?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have no problems with it. I've been out to the site. It's right around the corner from my parents' house. I'm there probably every day. Just add addition to the neighborhood. It's another church.
Right.
I don't know if this makes number ninety-six in a five-mile-square radius, or is it ninety-seven?
It's actually twenty within a one-mile radius.
Is it? How many?
Twenty.
Okay. So, I'll follow staff's recommendation on variance, SDR five-three-four-three-five, for approval. So, it's all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to... Excuse me. Motion to approve Carey's for item twenty-seven.
Don't get me wrong, no prayer is good.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the July sixteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, beginning with item number twenty-eight, which is VAR five-three-six-seven-one. The applicant owner is Victor Hecker, Ed L., for possible action on request for a variance to allow a ten-foot residential adjacency setback where sixty feet is required for a proposed convalescent care facility nursing home at the southwest corner of Elkhorn Road and Jones Boulevard. This is in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-nine is SUP five-three-four-nine-six for possible action on request for a special use permit for a convalescent care facility nursing home in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number thirty, which is SDR five-three-four-nine-seven for possible action on request for a site development plan review for a twenty-four-bed convalescent care facility nursing home. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number thirty, which is SDR five-three-four-nine-seven for possible action on request for a site development plan review for a twenty-four-bed convalescent care facility nursing home. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number thirty, which is SDR five-three-four-nine-seven for possible action on request for a site development plan review for a twenty-four-bed convalescent care facility nursing home. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the site is ideally suited for such a use as it will provide a buffer from the residential properties to the west and south from the intersection of two primary arterial roads. The building is designed to blend into the existing residential nature of the area. Staff is supporting of the requested variance since thirty-five-foot-tall, single-family residential building could be built on the parcel without the need for a variance. This would be fifteen feet taller than the proposed building height. The applicant is also providing additional landscaping in the number of trees and shrubs being installed along the landscape buffer areas. This additional landscape offsets the reduced number of trees required for the parking lot area. Staff therefore supports the requested exceptions as the additional landscape provided throughout the site negates any potential negative effect of the reduced number of trees in the parking lot. The proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing future land uses. Although a variance and an exception are required for this project to be successful, staff supports the request due to the unique nature of this project and its location and recommends approval of all applications with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Victor Hecker, eighty-five, ninety-three Verdi Park Circle. And this is Kevin Thistle, my architect.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Kevin Thistle, seventy-three, eighty-three Adacom Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, architect.
And ma'am, are you here to speak in it, or are you part of the application?
No, I'm here to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
All I want to say, Your Honor, is that... Not Your Honor. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I've had the property for a number of years. It... I had an opportunity to do several things on the property. I met with Councilman Ross, and he explained to me at the time, let's say, four or five years ago, that he promised the people in the neighborhood that he would not allow gas stations, Seven-Elevens, and so on and so forth to be on that corner. So, at that time, I had a town board meeting, and the people that lived in the area met with me, and they were bitterly opposed to something like that. And I asked them at the time what they felt would be appropriate for me to put on the site. That time, they told me, without beyond any question of a doubt, they would be all for assisted living or daycare and things like that, a single use. Approximately a year and a half ago, I attempted to purchase the land to the south of me, which would have taken this parcel, which is just under an acre, and expanded it to four acres. At that time, my plan was to do a facility with a hundred and ninety beds, two stories, and so on and so forth. And I got a lot of feedback from the neighbors. They were opposed to it. So, what we did is we scaled it down. Now it's down from a hundred and ninety beds to twenty-four. It's no two-story. It's a single story, beautiful landscape, small project. It's not real large. It will look, if you could see the renderings, it looks more like a beautiful home. Hopefully, you could see this. These are all four of the elevations. And number one, we don't believe it will create any traffic in the area. It will not create noise in the area. There will not be ambulances running in and out. In fact, it would be a very outstanding location for this project, which should be like a residential project. And that's what we've planned for the project. We feel that the people in the area in general did not oppose, were not opposed to it. We did have a couple, three people, such as the lady to my left, were opposed. They thought it would affect their lifestyle, which we don't believe it will in any way. We believe it's perfect. We couldn't find a better use for this piece of property.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to be heard?
Yes, I'll just say a couple of things. As was stated, this property is located at the corner of Elkhorn and Jones, which is a major arterial, not particularly suited for a single-family residence. It's only point-eight-three acres, which is small, which is kind of ideal for a memory care facility that we're proposing here. The height of the building is only twenty-three feet, ten inches, which is compatible with a normal, single-story residence. We made an attempt to try to provide architecturally attractive elevations on all four sides of the building so that we're not showing some blank wall to the adjacent neighbors. We have all of the parking that is necessary for this. We're not asking for any waivers or variances there. Obviously, I guess the white elephant in the room is that there is one waiver that we're asking for, which is requiring a sixty-foot side yard setback. And if we were to accommodate that sixty-foot side yard setback, it would take up approximately half the width of our property, which would leave us basically enough room for maybe a double-wide on the property.
All right, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goines?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have no problems with it. I've been out to the site. It's right around the corner from my parents' house. I'm there probably every day. Just add addition to the neighborhood. It's another church.
Right.
I don't know if this makes number ninety-six in a five-mile-square radius, or is it ninety-seven?
It's actually twenty within a one-mile radius.
Is it? How many?
Twenty.
Okay. So, I'll follow staff's recommendation on variance, SDR five-three-four-three-five, for approval. So, it's all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to... Excuse me. Motion to approve Carey's for item twenty-seven.
Don't get me wrong, no prayer is good.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the July sixteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, beginning with item number twenty-eight, which is VAR five-three-six-seven-one. The applicant owner is Victor Hecker, Ed L., for possible action on request for a variance to allow a ten-foot residential adjacency setback where sixty feet is required for a proposed convalescent care facility nursing home at the southwest corner of Elkhorn Road and Jones Boulevard. This is in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-nine is SUP five-three-four-nine-six for possible action on request for a special use permit for a convalescent care facility nursing home in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number thirty, which is SDR five-three-four-nine-seven for possible action on request for a site development plan review for a twenty-four-bed convalescent care facility nursing home. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the site is ideally suited for such a use as it will provide a buffer from the residential properties to the west and south from the intersection of two primary arterial roads. The building is designed to blend into the existing residential nature of the area. Staff is supporting of the requested variance since thirty-five-foot-tall, single-family residential building could be built on the parcel without the need for a variance. This would be fifteen feet taller than the proposed building height. The applicant is also providing additional landscaping in the number of trees and shrubs being installed along the landscape buffer areas. This additional landscape offsets the reduced number of trees required for the parking lot area. Staff therefore supports the requested exceptions as the additional landscape provided throughout the site negates any potential negative effect of the reduced number of trees in the parking lot. The proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing future land uses. Although a variance and an exception are required for this project to be successful, staff supports the request due to the unique nature of this project and its location and recommends approval of all applications with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Victor Hecker, eighty-five, ninety-three Verdi Park Circle. And this is Kevin Thistle, my architect.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Kevin Thistle, seventy-three, eighty-three Adacom Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, architect.
And ma'am, are you here to speak in it, or are you part of the application?
No, I'm here to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
All I want to say, Your Honor, is that... Not Your Honor. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I've had the property for a number of years. It... I had an opportunity to do several things on the property. I met with Councilman Ross, and he explained to me at the time, let's say, four or five years ago, that he promised the people in the neighborhood that he would not allow gas stations, Seven-Elevens, and so on and so forth to be on that corner. So, at that time, I had a town board meeting, and the people that lived in the area met with me, and they were bitterly opposed to something like that. And I asked them at the time what they felt would be appropriate for me to put on the site. That time, they told me, without beyond any question of a doubt, they would be all for assisted living or daycare and things like that, a single use. Approximately a year and a half ago, I attempted to purchase the land to the south of me, which would have taken this parcel, which is just under an acre, and expanded it to four acres. At that time, my plan was to do a facility with a hundred and ninety beds, two stories, and so on and so forth. And I got a lot of feedback from the neighbors. They were opposed to it. So, what we did is we scaled it down. Now it's down from a hundred and ninety beds to twenty-four. It's no two-story. It's a single story, beautiful landscape, small project. It's not real large. It will look, if you could see the renderings, it looks more like a beautiful home. Hopefully, you could see this. These are all four of the elevations. And number one, we don't believe it will create any traffic in the area. It will not create noise in the area. There will not be ambulances running in and out. In fact, it would be a very outstanding location for this project, which should be like a residential project. And that's what we've planned for the project. We feel that the people in the area in general did not oppose, were not opposed to it. We did have a couple, three people, such as the lady to my left, were opposed. They thought it would affect their lifestyle, which we don't believe it will in any way. We believe it's perfect. We couldn't find a better use for this piece of property.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to be heard?
Yes, I'll just say a couple of things. As was stated, this property is located at the corner of Elkhorn and Jones, which is a major arterial, not particularly suited for a single-family residence. It's only point-eight-three acres, which is small, which is kind of ideal for a memory care facility that we're proposing here. The height of the building is only twenty-three feet, ten inches, which is compatible with a normal, single-story residence. We made an attempt to try to provide architecturally attractive elevations on all four sides of the building so that we're not showing some blank wall to the adjacent neighbors. We have all of the parking that is necessary for this. We're not asking for any waivers or variances there. Obviously, I guess the white elephant in the room is that there is one waiver that we're asking for, which is requiring a sixty-foot side yard setback. And if we were to accommodate that sixty-foot side yard setback, it would take up approximately half the width of our property, which would leave us basically enough room for maybe a double-wide on the property.
All right, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Yes, I do.
Certainly. If you'll say your name and address, please?
My name is Isabel Camacho. I live at sixty-thirty-seven Elkhorn Road.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Isabel Camacho.
Thank you.
And I'm at sixty-thirty-seven Elkhorn Road, and my property is directly next to their property. The reason they're asking for the setback is because we live in a rural preservation area. The property, the previous owners that had the property, it was county. I don't know how along the way it got divided, and his property turned into city, and my property stayed into county when they were at one point together. And they were basically want to build a medical facility that's going to have streetlights, that's going to have parking. It's going to change and alter the way my... I live, my children live, my neighbors live. We all have farm animals. It's just, I don't agree with any of their... What they want to build, if they want to build a home. I think it's suited for a home. There are no commercial properties within a two-mile radius from there. So, it's like right dead center of a residential area. I mean, going from ten foot to sixty feet, that's a big difference. Also, he wants to put a twenty-four bed. They're not even on an acre. How about I put twenty-four horses on my acre and see what you guys tell me? I mean, I don't agree with that. Maybe directly affect it. I don't want ambulances. You know, I don't want the... What do you call it? It's just the traffic, everything that comes with the commercial property. That's essentially what it is. It's not a home. It's going to be very tall. All the properties in our area are all one-story. It's going to stick out like a sore thumb. You know, every day when the sun goes down, people are riding their horses up and down the street, around the corner in that area. They're going to be passing through there. It's just, I don't think it's somewhere it needs to be in a residential area, or I don't know how it's going to benefit our community, period.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter, sir? If you'll come on up?
Robert Fable, eighty-four, seventy-five Tioga. I feel this memory care convalescent home is perfect for this neighborhood. It's low traffic. It's pleasant. It's visible. It's low noise. We need a place for our seniors with memory care, our non-seniors with memory care to go to. I think this neighborhood is actually perfect for this. It's a fairly quiet neighborhood, and this is going to remain quiet. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Gretchen Batiste, forty-seven oh nine Sofia Way, Las Vegas, eight-nine oh three-two. I am a geriatric care manager for over ten years in Las Vegas. And when I was informed of this project, I was so excited because we have nothing in this area that could meet the needs of our seniors that do have memory issues. I have worked with the task force for the Assembly for Alzheimer's, and we are facing a shortage. And when they said this community would be only twenty-four beds, I was excited because it still would fit in the community as an environment that would be very conducive to our seniors. I would ask that you support this. It's going to be a beautiful design. I've seen the architecture. I've seen the design inside and out, and again, it is a viable project. I ask that you support it. I would make a correction to this last individual that came up. This is a non-medical facility. Anything that is a memory unit would be a non-medical facility. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Does any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Just briefly, my father lived in a memory home facility in a very congested neighborhood. It was a twelve-bed unit house. And unfortunately, what happens to the lady that's worried about the traffic and everything else coming in is the worse they get, the stop, people stop coming to visit. And it's very sad because they don't know who you are anymore, and there's just not enough of them. We searched and searched and searched for this one from my father, and I have to completely agree that this is needed. It would be a private facility. There's no noise. They don't go outside. You know, the bottom line is eventually people just stop coming to see them, and it's sad. So, I congratulate you for wanting to put this in our community, and you will see my full support on this item tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goines?
Yeah, I do. I appreciate the fact that you reduced it, and I knew the original Blue Plant was a large building, but I think this is an appropriate use. I know there's residential on three of the corners, but I don't think abutting right up on Jones would be good quality of life for a home. And so, I can support it, and I know Ms. Camacho was here last time, and I know we... She went back and forth with me, and she made the comment that it's a bunch of old people, and who wants to be by old people? And like I told her, you keep living.
They're going to be conflicted about dust.
You keep living. You keep living, and you may be walking next door. And so, it may be convenient for you, but...
That's uncalled for. I mean, it is affecting...
Ma'am, let me speak. You have to speak to the chairman if you want to speak to me. So, with that, I'll be able to support it, and I think you're going to bring added addition to the neighborhood. So, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bartle?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, again, this is the kind of use that the residents do not use the outside, and that, to me, is justification for the waiver that's been asked for for the setback. Number two, this actually is... Has a bigger impact than I think we realize. There are a lot of corner parcels like this that probably would never be built with a single-family home in the rural or semi-rural areas where a use like this would be very accommodating. And I see this as a precedent-setting use for that kind of setting, and I applaud you for doing it, the scale that you are doing it. I will support this application.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Truesdale.
For the neighbors, we're not... We're just doing a special use for them. We're not... And the variance. We're not changing the zoning. We're not reinventing things here. They do this, or they have to come back to us. So, I think as a neighbor, you get some protection through your chairman. Is this a locked-door facility?
Is this a what?
Locked-door facility.
Yes, it is.
Okay. That additionally for the neighborhood means there's only visitors coming. No one... They're not going outside for a cigarette. They're not going outside. They're inside this facility, and they have...
But they're going to have people coming to visit them, and then that's going to create traffic.
Unfortunately...
Excuse me. I can't have a give and take going back right now. This is all the commissioners speaking, but I appreciate it. Commissioner Truesdale, you proceed.
All the people I've known that family members are in these types of care facilities, the family doesn't come. They really do in our warehouse, and it's to try and provide a quality of life for people that don't have any reference points of where their life is. So, like Commissioner Goines says, you know, if we live long enough, we'll all be here, and I will support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, I think that... Well, the applicant's right. Councilman Ross was not in support of a more intense use of this parcel. We're down to twenty-four beds. I don't believe it's going to increase traffic. I don't believe it's going to increase noise. Architecturally, it blends very well with the community. I don't think... I agree with my fellow commissioners. You're not... You have to speak to the chairman if you want to speak to me. So with that, I'll be able to support it, and, and I think you're going to bring an added addition to the neighborhood, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Bonner.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, again, this is the kind of use that the, the residents do not use the outside, and that, to me, is justification for the waiver that's been asked for, for the setback. Number two, this, this actually is, has a bigger impact than I think we realize. There are a lot of corner parcels like this that probably would never be built with a single-family home in the rural or semi-rural areas where a use like this would be very accommodating. And I see this as a precedent-setting use for that kind of setting, and I, and I applaud you for, for doing it, the scale that you are doing it. I will support this, this application.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Moody? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Truesdale.
For the neighbors, we're not, we're just doing a special use permit. We're not, and the variance, we're not changing the zoning, we're not reinventing things here. They do this, or they have to come back to us. So I think, as a neighbor, you get some protection through your chairman. Is this a locked-door facility?
Is this a what?
Locked-door facility.
Yes, it is.
Okay. That additionally, for the neighborhood, means there's only visitors coming. No one, they're not going outside for a cigarette, they're not going outside. They're inside this facility, and they have...
But they're going to have people coming to visit them, and then that's going to create traffic.
Unfortunately, ma'am...
Excuse me, I can't have a give-and-take going back right now. This is all the commissioners speaking, but I appreciate it. Commissioner Truesdale, you proceed.
All the people I've known that family members are in these types of care facilities, the family doesn't come. They, they really do, are in our warehouse, and it's, it's to try and provide a quality of life for people that don't have any reference points of where their life is. So, like Commissioner Goins says, you know, if we live long enough, we'll all be here. And I, I will support this.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Moody?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I think that, well, the applicant's right. Councilman Ross was not in support of a, a more intense use of this parcel. We're down to 24 beds. I don't believe it's going to increase traffic. I don't believe it's going to increase noise. Architecturally, it blends very well with, with the, the community. I don't think, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners, you're not going to see a home go in there. No, no one is going to build a home on that corner lot. And I think what you have is the least, or the closest thing to a residential use that, that I could come up with. And so I, I'm in support of this. I also think it's a, it's a good buffer between those, those arterial streets and the, the residential community that's there. So I'm, I'm in support of this, and if there are no other comments...
One technical point, we've dealt with rural, urban kind of conflict points, and I would think that we might be able to convince staff to either do away with or minimize the use of the streetlights in, in respect of the rural neighborhood that's right next door. So I don't know how you do that, but that's a recommend...
Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion.
Comment from staff?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a condition to the SDR, which states, dedicate an additional five feet of right-of-way on Elkhorn Road where such does not exist concurrent with, with the development of this site. And just in regard to Elkhorn Road, it is 100-foot right-of-way. There are going to, it has, it's signalized, and there probably won't be a traffic signal or a, a streetlight in front of this property, it's too close to the intersection. So all the lighting will come from the intersection. As Elkhorn develops, eventually, it will be a 100-foot right-of-way with streetlights and sidewalk on both sides.
What does that extra five feet do to the site plan we're about to act on?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't actually do anything. We have part of the five feet of the sidewalk at the corner. This just allows us to put the sidewalk in the right-of-way at the right location.
It will, it won't affect our project at all, it's no problem.
Yeah, no cha, no change to the site plan.
Commissioner Moody?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Does the applicant agree to that stated condition?
Yes, not a problem at all.
All right, then with that, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation on Item 28 for approval, subject to the stated conditions.
Motion to approve Item 28 carries.
Item 29, the motion is also to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion to approve Item Number 29 carries.
And on Item 30, again, to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
And that's what the condition?
That is, that is with the condition, as stated, and agreed upon by the applicant.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion to approve Item Number 30 carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Now going on now to related items 31 through 38, starting with Item Number 31. VAR 53840, applicant owner is Richmond American Homes. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 14 at the northwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Bradley Road, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Item Number 32, which is VAR 53841, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 24 in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item 33 is VAR 53842, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 10. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item Number 34, VAR 53844, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 28. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item 35, VAR 53845, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 29. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item 36, VAR 53846, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 33. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item Number 37, VAR 53848, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 36. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item 38, VAR 53850, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot corner-side setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on proposed Lot 40. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance for each of the eight corner lots to allow a 10-foot corner-side yard setback where 15 feet is the code requirement for an R1, single-family residential zone parcels. The applicant is proposing a housing product that does not fit on the corner lots of recently approved tentative map for a 40-lot, single-family residential subdivision. This request clearly reflects the proposed overdevelopment of the eight lots. As this is a self-imposed hardship, staff recommends denial of all eight variance requests. If denied, all proposed structures will have to meet current setback standards, or no building permits will be issued. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Bob Gronhauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing Richmond American Homes in this matter. And if I could get your attention to the overhead, I want to lay out for you the, the tentative map that has already been approved for the property itself. As you can take a look on the overhead here, this is a 40-lot subdivision that was previously approved earlier this year in March of 2014. It was a R1 zone change for a very low density of just a little bit above four, four dwelling units to the acre. And coming in with respect to the site plan and doing, doing the final site plan analysis and the lot-fit analysis, it was determined that the lots that I'm showing you here that are highlighted in these areas, which is internal to the site itself, we are requesting for a side corner yard setback variance request in this area that I can show you on the overhead here. For example, the first lot that I'm showing you that's showed here is Lot 14, which is on the corner of Bruin Lake Street and Pauley Hill Street. Although that we are asking for a 10-foot rear yard, a corner-side yard setback, we're actually about 15 feet from the street itself. The street is located here. You have a five-foot sidewalk, five-foot landscape, you have a block wall, and then you have another fi, additional five more feet to the corner of the building itself at the, at the lowest point. We believe that the landscaping, the sidewalk, and the additional five feet, although it's not counted as a 15-foot separation, it is technically counted as a 10-foot separation since staff considers that the measurement is from back of sidewalk to the corner of the house itself, which is the reason why we come up with the 10 feet itself. We have approximately five models in the subdivision here. These models range anywhere from close to 32, 3300 square feet, all the way up to 3800 square feet. One of the five models itself does not need the corner-side yard setback that we are requesting. We're trying to get a variety of different lots, not, excuse me, not lots, but site plans, models itself on, on these lots itself. I could go through each individual lot itself, but I think for time, to save some time here, what I'd like to do is just focus on Lot 14. The other lots that I have range anywhere from 10 feet to 12 feet. It's a little bit over 13-foot setbacks as you measure from back of sidewalk, not back of curb. But I think the gist is, is you could understand what we're asking here. Again, this is a development that fits nicely in the Northwest. It's an R1 development, it's a low-density product, and we believe that this is appropriate in this area since the corner-side yard setbacks are internal to the site.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these, on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Saying none, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Bonner?
Yes, I, I had a discussion with Mr. Gronhauer about this, and I, I asked a question. I don't know if we haven't answered yet, but the, but the thought was that this came about from the engineer who, from where he measured the, the setback. The difference was between the edge, the back of curb and the back of sidewalk. And if there's an engineer who hasn't learned yet that in the city, you take it from the back of sidewalk, he may need a lesson. So I don't, I, it may not be the builder's self-imposed, but it might be an engineer-imposed self-imposition. And I'm wondering if the engineer should be taken to task, or if you ought to find a smaller building footprint to accommodate the, the actual measurement that the city requires.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goins?
Yeah, thank you. I know I abstained on the consent item on, on, on this, and I've just talked with the city attorney. My house is directly on the notice line on here, but I, I feel comfortable that I can vote with this, and I've discussed it with the city attorney, so I'll be voting.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it fair to characterize most, if not all, of these lots that you're asking for the variance on as internal lots to, to the subdivision? Yes, that's what I characterize this. With that, and because of the explanation regarding the sidewalk, plus the landscaping, plus the setback, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, so you'll see my support.
Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are you. Just a point for Bob Gronhauer. In the future, if you could present a full site plan or something to go along with this backup, kind of like you presented on the overhead, because...
Okay, yes.
I didn't know where this, how this related. I was looking, because when I look at the location aerial map, it shows like 12 lots. It was very confusing, and so if you could just provide better backup in the future, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion.
Regarding Item 31, my motion is for approval.
Motion to approve Item Number 31 carries.
Motion to approve Item 32.
Motion to approve Item Number 32 carries.
Move to approve Item 33, VAR 53842.
Motion to approve Item 33 carries.
Move to approve Item 34, VAR 53844.
Please vote. Motion to approve Item 34 carries.
Move to approve Item 35, VAR 53845.
Please vote. Motion to approve Item 35 carries.
Move to approve Item 36, VAR 53846.
Please vote. Motion to approve Item 36 carries.
Move for approval of Item 37, VAR 53848.
Please vote. Motion to approve Item 37 carries.
And finally, Item 38, VAR 53850, move for approval.
Please vote. Motion to approve Item 38 carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to related items 39 and 40, beginning with Item 39. This, the applicant is Tammy Cross, owner is Sandcastle Enterprises, Tenea Series. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 13 parking spaces where 19 parking spaces are required at 124 North Tenea Way, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item Number 40 is SUP 53858, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a private school primary use. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use complies with all requirements of Title 1912, with the exception of required parking. The applicant is requesting a parking variance to allow 13 spaces where 19 are required. As a result of the parking deficiency, staff does recommend denial. Please note, we've received additional comments after publication.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nathan Taylor with Taylor Consulting Group, representing the applicant in this matter. I'll be brief, since the evening is late. This is representing Crossroads Christian Academy, which has been operating as a daycare center, as a little background, for about three years now. One thing, and I learned something through this process, too, we're always learning, is that she's been operating a daycare center, but when you add the kindergarten and first grade, which is what the applicant's doing, it changes the use. And that's why we're here today requesting a special use permit, because the school has grown, which is, which is great. And so therefore, with it growing and with the requests of her, you know, the new children coming in, she's added kindergarten and first grade. This has been operating as a daycare facility since about 1989, or around that time. We're basically just asking to, you know, approve this application, you know, our parking waiver. One of the issues I wanted to touch on is that, generally speaking, the parking lot here during the day, on any given day, is pretty much empty. When I showed up there the other day, there were two cars in the parking lot. The parking is not an issue here. We're, we're asking that you approve the with, the, what staff's conditions have approved, and requesting, except for one thing that's in there, which is a traffic impact analysis. We're requesting today respectfully that you take that out as a request, that we do not have to do a traffic impact analysis. Traffic's not a problem in the area. That's, the Tenea and West Cliff is right there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll come up, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Hal Cruz, and I'm here today representing the High Gate Homeowners Association, which surrounds this business. We want it to stay open, okay? That's, that's what we wanted to do. So we'd really appreciate if you approved this. Parking is, I don't understand it. Just like this man says, I've lived there for 17 years. That parking lot has never been full. And she has a street to park on as well. They even park down Pyroscope Road sometimes. But we would really appreciate that business staying there and staying open.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this?
Hi, good evening. My name's Trista Stewart, 633 Empire Lane. My kids have attended Crossroads Christian Academy going on two years now. It is an amazing school with a terrific Christian foundation. I have gone different times of the day. There's never been an issue with parking, never an issue with traffic. If we have to, like the gentleman said, we park in the street if necessary. I highly recommend that you approve this, so it doesn't impact future education for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Charlie Stewart, 633 Empire Lane. I'll make it brief, as it's certainly late and I'm sure everyone's hungry. I have four points to make. This is my lovely wife here. Our children have been going to the school for several years. Wonderful school. So the first point is, to me, a silly parking variance is jeopardizing a local small business. Ridiculous to me. Two, I believe there is a societal impact that could result from not granting this variance, given that a, a less beneficial establishment could move in, as this could basically put her out of business. Three, growth. There, there's been a, a, a change in use from daycare to school. But there's been no real growth, because the same number of classrooms are utilized, whether it's a daycare or a school. So the amount of parking required for the two different uses doesn't really make sense to me, because there's still the same number of children or heads within the school, no matter the use. Parking, I'm a contractor here in the valley, I have a very flexible schedule. Pick the kids up... Pick the kids up, drop them off, virtually all hours of the day because of the flexibility of my schedule. Never, ever had an issue with parking. And traffic is certainly not an issue. A traffic study would be, quite frankly, ridiculous. I lived half a mile from the school before I moved to 633 Ampere Lane at 217 Candlelight, absolutely zero traffic issues at the major intersection there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity to actually visit the school this week, or, yeah, this week. And with Mr. Taylor. And I've been involved in a lot of school issues over the years, private schools and daycare and beginning school. And I gotta tell you, I was very impressed when we went in there, and the staff, the parking was not full, it was not impacted. I also have a daughter that teaches school back east, and she's in a pro, she teaches a program that encourages students to go from that kindergarten class to a first-grade class in the same facility. And that's a, not a special program, but it's a, it's a pilot program in Washington, DC, and it's proving to be very successful. So I, I give her a lot of credit for the project she, the program she's working and the business she operates. So I'll support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. And I, and Rick, Commissioner Truesdale and I went together because Rick's eye for schools are very keen, and I knew if there was something amok, he would notice it right away, and I would take heed to whatever he said, because he has been very instrumental in many educational facilities in our community. And both of us were just overwhelmed with joy at the atmosphere, at the playground, at the cleanliness, at the fact that one single neighbor has complained about it. We met at 2:00, there were two cars in the parking lot, and I congratulate you for building such a beautiful school for young children. I'm sad you can't grow bigger. I wish you could go to fifth grade, you can't. But like I said, it was a great experience for Commissioner Truesdale and I, and you'll see my full support on it. And if nobody wants to speak on it, I'm ready for a motion.
We'll take a motion.
Thank you. Regarding item number 39, variance 53860, it's my pleasure to make the motion for approval and to disregard the, is this where I disregard the traffic study?
No, that would be on subsequent.
Okay. So with that, I'm offering the motion for approval on this item.
Thank you. Commissioner, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just talk about the traffic study real quick, just to be very brief.
Wait till we finish this one, go ahead. The motion to approve item number 39 carries. Go ahead.
Yeah. Public Works agrees that as the school operates today, it's not a problem. So the way the condition reads is actually, if they agree that the maximum number of students is 102 students, they don't need to do a traffic study. But if they want to go over 102, they will.
Well, the enrollment fluctuates. I know that with the daycare license currently through the state, it allows for 102. Am I correct? The daycare is allowed 102, and then with the other, with the other two classrooms, we'd add an additional, maybe 30 students. So we would probably have anywhere between 1, you know, 140 and 150, maximum ever, on that location. And we really couldn't go any farther than that anyway, because of occupancy level in the building. We only have so many classrooms.
Is that okay with you, Lucian?
Well, you know, based on what I've talked to the traffic guys, they agreed to the 102. And I can't agree to anything more than that, because we haven't seen the impacts on anything additional. If this is going to City Council, they can maybe meet with, with us between now and City Council, and we can figure out if the 150 will work, and then we can maybe change our condition at City Council.
So I make, so may I make the motion and disregard the condition and let them fix it if they have to?
I'm just not sure if they're going to City Council. If this is a final action, then we will.
No, I'm not gonna have it final action. I'm gonna have it go to City Council.
That's fine, we can fix it at City Council.
Okay. So regarding SUP 53858, I make the motion for approval disregarding a traffic study at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 40 carries?
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good evening.
You too, take care.
Mr. Chairman, these items go forward to the July 16th City Council meeting.
Moving on now to related items 41 and 42, beginning with item number 41, which is VAR 53865. Applicant owner is William B. Enson Living Trust. For possible action on request for a variance to allow a two-foot side yard setback, where 10 feet is required for an existing 2,808 square foot accessory structure, Class II pigeon coop at 6,500 West Dan Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Related item 42 is SUP 53867, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for animal keeping and husbandry, 240 homing racing pigeons. Staff is recommending denial on both actions. Staff, may we have the report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by constructing a structure that does not meet, without permits, that fails to meet setback requirements. As such, staff recommends denial of both applications. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is William Enson. I live at 5170 Rustic Ridge Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. I originally have lived here for 35 years. I've had pigeon coops all over this town, on the east side, west side, north side, and I built them. One property, I had 30-feet structure, another 30-foot structure, another 30. I have a total 90-foot structure on one property. I had 115-foot structure on another property. And I never knew that an aviary needed a building permit. I just thought it was for birds, keeping of birds. But it's been pointed out to me that the structure is a structure, and it's not just an aviary. And so with that, I went to Councilman Ross's office and asked for his recommendations. He told me to start out with a neighborhood meeting, which we did. And we didn't have anyone show up except for Councilman Ross's secretary, Michelle. And after her being there for about an hour and educating her of what I am attempting to do with the breeding of racing homing pigeons, she was amazed and went back to Councilman Ross and convinced him to get with Commissioner Moody and take a site walk of the property. And what I'm asking for here is to be able to complete the building where a 10-foot setback is required with only a two-foot setback. I brought a picture to show what the actual site looks like after I have put up the block wall and where the structure is next to it, and you can see that the neighbor's yard.
Thank you.
Where it is.
Excuse me, Ken. Yes.
Perfect. I'm on the right side of the wall, the neighbor's on the left side of the wall, where the, where the car is, and the truck and the van. And I purposely built the wall so that I wouldn't interfere with the neighbor, and I haven't, wouldn't have to go and ask them to split the costs. I didn't want to interfere with their yard, so I built it over on the side of the yard. But I didn't know that you guys had a 10-foot setback there at the time, and so that's why I'm requesting that. And as far as the pigeons are concerned, I breed birds that I send out to other races all over the United States and in South Africa. And as I breed the birds in this facility, the babies come out of these birds, I set in holding pens until I evaluate them, and then I send them out to these different races. Some of the races that I send to, you can win as much as $200,000. And I know that people don't understand, you know, the keeping of racing pigeons. They all think that they're common pigeons that sit up on the billboards and on people's rooftops, but I assure you, these pigeons do not. These pigeons are identified at birth with a ring on their, on their leg that identifies the national organization that we belong to. It identifies me as a person, the club that I belong to, the year of the bird's birth, and the, and the number, so that you can identify the bird. I brought with me tonight a bird that I can show you, okay? So that you'll see the difference between, and how they're identified. Hopefully, I won't let it go. But this is a modern-day racing pigeon, okay? These pigeons, for me, are valued. A lot of the pigeons that I have, I paid in excess of $10,000 for. There is a pigeon that sold last year over in the UK. It sold for $400,000. It was bought by a man in China. So I'm trying to represent to you that, that I'm kind of like a thoroughbred racehorse breeder, or a thoroughbred dog breeder, that these birds get the best of care. And that's why I need the facility that I have, so that they can get the best ventilation, the best water, the best food, the best medication. Also, my brother's a veterinarian here in town, and I work for him, and we have another veterinarian on staff. She's an aviating vet, and she checks the droppings on the birds, the bloods on the birds, swabs the crops on the birds. We do blood tests, we do fecal samples. So they're the utmost of, in the utmost of health. And so that's why I'm requesting the keeping of the birds and the setback.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you part of the application, or are you here to speak in, on it?
No. Mr. Chairman, my name's Victor DeBrower. I'm, Bill Enson's one of my best friends. I'm also a pigeon flyer. I'm fourth-generation pigeon flyer. My grandfather immigrated here from Belgium, where he originated his flying with his dad, from his father. So I'm fourth generation. I am also a contractor here, I'm also a resident here. I'm trying to help my friend with his situation. All right. I have met Vice Chairman Moody. I have showed him some of the results of what this sport can do. The problem with pigeons is that everybody equates that to the birds that sit on the billboards. And they don't realize the value involved to the people that are in the sport of racing pigeons. I have here the article which Bill Enson had mentioned, that shows, I have some extra ones, should you guys be interested. This is, this is, okay. This is our, our American Racing Pigeon Digest, front cover, which you can see is done very professionally. Inside, it has the article that he was referring to, of a bird by the name of Bolt. Bolt belonged to Leo Hermans. Leo Hermans was a retired pigeon flyer that sold out a year ago. He sold his entire loft of pigeons for 434,000, I mean, excuse me, 4,346 pounds, which equates to $5.5 million worth of pigeons that he sold in one day to online auction sites connected to the entire pigeon world. Bolt, which was his number-one pigeon, sold for $398,381. Now, if you're in the position that Mr. Enson's in, or the position that I am in, and you have pigeons of value, you're gonna make sure that they are housed in the most and best accommodations as possible. They're gonna get fed the best of all the seed that money will buy. They will be given medication that is equal to the medication in price that we're given. You'd be surprised what you have to pay for this stuff to keep your stock healthy. Now, if you're gonna have that kind of a vested interest, financially or otherwise, you're gonna make sure that the housing is the best it can be, and everything else. So the problem, as I see it, with most of the people here in the United States, is they're not familiar with the people in Europe. Everybody from Europe knows about racing pigeons. The UK, which you can fit inside the state of California, the entire UK, has a quarter million, 250,000 racing pigeon flyers in the UK. So these are not the average pigeons. That's what I'm trying to say. Bill Enson is a man of character. He's established in the business world here, and he wouldn't be wasting his time with this if it was what most people refer to as a pigeon.
Thank you very much, sir. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll come on down? And if you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Paul Jensen, 183 Ruby Ridge, Henderson, Nevada. I too am a pigeon racer. However, what I would like to bring to the chamber's attention is that pigeons have been used in war, they're used in the medical field to pick out bad pills. They're only out of the loft to train. They don't sit outside, because if you can't get the bird back into clock properly, you lose the race. So they're only out for training, and they're taken care of by the best that you can afford to do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst Commissioners. I see Commissioner Slotman's ready.
Yes, Chairman, through you. Question for the applicant. So do you take these pigeons out and fly them straight from your property around the neighborhood and back?
No. What, what happens if you were going to race them? The propose, that I'm proposing is just to breed them. I would send them to special races throughout the United States and to Florida. But if I was racing them, if that was a racing loft there, I would train them daily to come in and out of the loft. And then when I start training them, I take them a distance away from the loft. I'd start with a mile, they would come home, two miles, come home, five miles, 10 miles, and then I put it into the perspective of an athlete. I'd take them longer, shorter, longer, shorter, until they got it to where they were coming as fast as they possibly could, so I could beat the competition that was around me.
So you're gonna, I guess, so you're gonna take them a mile, four miles, five miles, and they're gonna race their way back to this chicken, pigeon coop?
Correct.
And aviary, sorry. What about the Clark County Department of Aviation and?
I'm not going to be, let my birds out.
But I thought you were gonna?
No. If I was going to have a race, I was saying, if I was racing my birds, you ask me, how do I get them to come home? I have raced in the past in other locations. This location is just a breeding facility. They will not go outside.
Okay. And you would make a condition that?
Yes.
They wouldn't go out?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm glad you held that bird pretty tight, because I have ornithophobia, so if that bird would have flown up here, I would have been running out back. Really? Thank you.
Commissioner DeBrower?
Yeah, I, this is a land use issue. I'm wondering if you, if your neighbor realizes that you're that close? Have you got contact with that neighbor? I kind of noticed you put the coop up against the common property line rather than?
Yeah. We have had, we had had talks with the neighbors, and... We have had, we had had talks with the neighbors, and this property has been there for a long time. The two previous owners to me, within the last five-year period, have had over 400 racing pigeons there that have raced and have gone out and have come back, and they haven't had one single complaint.
Okay. And the last question is, are we charging this gentleman enough for his business license with the value that he's creating? Is there a business license?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Moody, entertain a motion.
All right. First, let me say that 45 days ago, I too was a pigeon hater, and I visited this property. And it's really pretty amazing what's going on here. I think the applicant has explained this two-foot setback, and that's because of that wall that's there, which, you know, is not posing any type of fire hazard. Because of the applicant's willingness to agree, you know, that these pigeons are not going to be flying in and out of this property, I don't see any negative impacts to the neighbors. In fact, there have been no complaints, to my knowledge, about sounds, smell, or any other type of nuisance. And I'm glad Commissioner Schlotman mentioned the Clark County Department of Aviation's letter, which is part of our record, the last part of which says that they were having a public hearing to consider amending Title 30 of the Development Code to prohibit such uses if the birds do not remain confined. And so even if that were in place here, because you're keeping the birds confined, it would not apply here. So I got to be honest, when I first read this, I'm like, you got to be kidding me. What are you looking for? And having seen what you do and visited the property, I am a convert, so you're going to see my support. And I'm happy to make the motion for approval of Item 41, subject to the condition that has been agreed upon by the applicant, that the birds will remain confined.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve Item Number 41, Carries.
And? Item 42, SUP 53867. The motion is for approval.
Vice Chairman Moody, if I could just clarify, the condition to keep the birds confined should actually be on the special use permit and not on the variance.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that makes sense. So my motion, let me amend my motion. My motion on Item 42, SUP 53867, with the condition that the birds will remain confined.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman?
I wanted to vote no on Item 41, and I inadvertently hit yes, so I want to let the clerk know that both of those items, I'm voting no on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Groins, on that. And Item Number 42, the motion to approve, Carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Item 46, VAR 53482. The applicant owner is BMLJHL 2011 Trust, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an accessory structure, Class 2, to be located two feet from the rear property line where 10 feet is the minimum required, and to allow two feet from the principal dwelling where six feet is the minimum required, at 2010 Home View Court in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. May we please have staff report?
Mr. Vice Chairman, staff finds that there's no unique or extraordinary evidence to warrant the requested variance, and as such, the hardship is self-imposed, and staff does recommend denial of the requested variance. Please note, we have received additional protests and letters of support since publication.
Thank you. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Will you please state your name and address?
Jan Leavitt, 2010 Home View Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89117.
I did not hear your name.
Jan Leavitt.
Thank you.
I also have two more letters to add to that, to 30-something, that are in approval of this. This first started out as a project that was taking place because of these homes. I don't know if you can see them. Is that right? With the big windows, the big balconies that are being built directly behind that one. That's our wall. This has been taken about 10 years, still not complete. They're still not complete. So we went to try and find out how we could do some sort of a buffer for the invasion of privacy, basically, because they looked down directly from their windows, or their place, into my kitchen, actually, from my patio, kitchen, everything. We have absolutely zero privacy. So we went to, I know. We went to Lowe's, and we went to Home Depot. We went to Sam's Club to purchase play areas, and that is Sam's Club. You can see that that is very large in structure, has very open slides, you name it. Here's another Sam's Club. Home Dep, Lowe's. They all have windows. Some of them have canvas instead of roofing. Some have solid roofing, that's solid roofing. You can buy individual pieces at Lowe's. They showed us several different ways you could purchase, or you could, this one right here, you could purchase it, you could purchase just the materials. They had everything there for you. They would build them for you, or you could do it yourself. There's another one. You can see how that would invade somebody's privacy. If we just had put two of these for our grandchildren in our yard, that would look directly into this man's yard and show no privacy for him. This was totally built, this was totally built from the get-go, privacy for both sides. As you look at what we have, what we have put together and purchased, I can see that, but this one. This is looking from our, all right? That's our patio, looking towards his windows, and that's the wall. Okay? And we purchased all our materials like they told us to, with their type of kits. We had the boards, the same, everything. We actually overlapped everything, so that our grandchildren, which do not live in this state, live back east, we don't even have them here, but they cannot have any access to that property visually or physically. We didn't want them to have any opportunity to step onto their wall, to even get to the wall, or to invade their privacy. So we have built it closer than anything you can buy at Sam's Club, Costco, anywhere that these are manufactured. And to show that, here's a picture. This is three feet. That's only for a three-foot child, three feet high with a little gate, for a little three-year-old to play around. There's a slide on both sides. One slide comes off the top in a round. I know, I want to see, I want to show them how. That's how close those are put together. There is no way anyone can see through them. And our grandchildren have been here and have not bothered, they're not even interested on that side of the wall. The neighborhood around us has other structures that they have purchased. That right there is the top of one that's been purchased from a store, but that's a 15-foot wall. Ours is six. Okay? So we took it into consideration to have that as a very private, this is his side. This is looking at it from his, if you want to look at that, that's what he's seeing. There, our children cannot, everything that's solid, anything that is solid at all, is the only backside of this, and we have made it below the level of the wall. And it's to give him privacy, so our grandkids, if they did talk, would not interrupt or say anything, that other people would try to enjoy their backyard and invade their privacy with their voice. So that's why that part, below the wall, right here and right here, are solid structure. We have a little window somewhere that it shows. I can't see where it is now. Anyway, we do have a little window. But here's a slide right here and a slide on the other side. But it is solid. There is no way that they can, they can bother the other, other yard, other people in the other yard. Now, the only thing that has happened between, and that's been there four and a half years, by the way. That's been constructed four and a half years without any problems whatsoever. Now, since that four and a half years, in this last year, there's been very much illegal activity at that home. There is a letter that has been sent to the Building and Safety Department. I hope you've all received a letter of it. If you haven't, I have them for you, because it's on record.
Will you please hand a copy of that to the clerk?
It is on record on the internet, and so we didn't go into much detail. I just want them to know that this was very recent, within the last year, that we feel more at ease now, knowing that we have done what we have done for a buffer, and we have needed this as a barrier between the two of us because of the activity that has taken place. Metro has been involved, SWAT has been involved, and several investigations and warrants have been served. Further information on this can be, you can contact, and we've given the SWAT officer and Metro's number for you, the people in charge, for added information, because we strictly are not involved. But I think that the tenant, I don't even think it's a tenant, I think it's the owner of the whole complex must think that we were. I don't know. That's my thought. Why after four years? Is there a problem now? Now, if there's anything we can do more to make it less visible for anything, for him, to make it more private, we're willing to do that. Otherwise, we were told, there, there you go, we were told that we were not, there is no permits or anything necessary. It has no permanent foundation. There is no cement slab. As long as it didn't have permanent footing, cement slabs, we didn't need it, so.
Is it okay for I to say something? My name is Bernie Leavitt. I live also at 2010 Home View Court. I just wanted to mention, too, that we worked really hard to make this aesthetically pleasing, as you can see. And also, I had a chance to meet with Councilwoman Tarkanian, and we discussed this, and she was quite positive and supportive of it. Just wanted to let you know that, too.
And she does know more details than you do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We hope you approve it, and here's two more letters to put into admission. Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or opposition to this?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Christensen. I live next to the Leavitts. I also represent the Homeowners Association that houses this unusual subdivision. There are seven owners. The Homeowners Association has reviewed both the citation and the setup in the backyard of Mr. and Mrs. Leavitt, and are in unanimous approval that it should be preserved. It's intended, after all, for nine grandkids that they have, and our 10 sometimes join them. We think that it is aesthetically pleasing. We think that there is no negative impact. We think that your statute, particularly the administrative deviation statute, expresses the kind of variation or variance that you can allow here. The flavor is a minor adjustment, unique circumstances, where the ordinance is literally imposed, it would create unnecessary hardship. Now, it would cause them monetary loss, but more than that, it would cause them the loss of their ability to interact with their grandchildren and children. We think there are other area precedents up and down Tioga, which is a street facing Our Cul-de-sac to the west. They showed you one. I think there are four along that street that are within a couple of feet, two feet, three feet, from the, from the wall. We think this is an incidental structure to the residents, that it's, it's an acceptable ancillary use, or an accessory use that should be acceptable. And as Mrs. Leavitt indicated, this really is a private accommodation to buffer, to block views. It's a two-way street. They both want the same thing. I don't think there's any nuisance involved there. And just to further her comments, I woke up one morning, walked out, and there were two flash grenades that went off on the other side of the wall. There were K-9 units throughout the neighborhood. This is where the complaint came from, that side of the wall. These are not people that we can consider to have the best interest of the neighborhood in mind. And so it's, we think these are great people, sincere people, and that you should approve their application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
Roy Zalman, 7422 Yon Court, Las Vegas, Nevada. I live in the neighborhood. I'm a neighbor. I'm working for a company who manages the Homeowner Association, and I represent also the owner of a house which is adjacent to this house. It's 7518 Yon Court. And the tenants there, it's a family with a triplet, three months old. And the view that they see every day, is this one? That's the view. It took them, it took us several months to lease that particular house, when all of the other homes that are in that neighborhood are usually leased within, between a couple of days to a couple of weeks. This particular house, every person that I personally showed the house to, and I showed it to many people over the, those months, everybody was horrified from the view, and this is the view from the living room. So once you enter the house, there are, there are big windows, and that's what you see. So it's not, it's pretty much an eyesore based on the feedback that I got from everyone. And it's pretty clear, looking at that map, that they had many other places to place that playground. So they have all this backyard. The playground is here, and they could have placed it anywhere here, and this is pretty private, they have tall trees, but they still placed it here because, based on what they claimed, because of privacy issues. And they could have chosen a more reasonable privacy solution, like nice tall trees or some other landscaping solutions, and we would have added some of that. But a gentleman here said there is no monetary, you know, damages here. There clearly are monetary damages for several reasons. One is the length of time that every time it took to lease that house. The second is, we had to reduce the lease on this house significantly compared to the two adjacent homes here. And that created a real problem for us, and there is such an easy solution, just to move that to any other place, and to put some nice landscaping here, and that will solve everything. Regarding the claims with the Metro PD, I personally ordered them, I spoke with detectives, because as soon as I suspected that something was going on in that house, and I didn't know what happened there, nobody in the neighborhood knew exactly what's going on there, but we suspected that something is going on. what's going on there, but we suspected that something is going on. I personally contacted detectives from Metro PD. I gave them the names of those people who were living there, and they told us, and we do background checks for everyone. Obviously, as landlord, you don't have access to all the information that Metro PD has. So, the detective told me that they will run a check, and that if something suspicious will come up, I'll know about it immediately. So, a day later, police came, and they entered that house, and that was during midnight. Two hours later, we posted an eviction notice on that house, and within a week and a half, nobody was there. And that's when we tried to lease it again for a few months, and all the other homes were leased really quickly, like I mentioned. This particular house took several months. We reduced the price, and eventually, we found a nice family with three kids that are living there now. I value playgrounds. I have four kids. I know how nice it is, and, you know, to take your kids to nice parks around the neighborhood. There is one in Sahara. But I think that if you choose a privacy solution, there are better ways to come up with such a solution, like the trees that I mentioned.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard on this item? No, ma'am. Okay. If you speak from back there, it's not part of the record, so I'm just going to restate what you've said, that you can't have trees between the wall and the playground. Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no further comment, I'll close the public discussion part of this and open it up for discussion amongst the planning commissioners.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Ziedlman, may I ask you a couple of questions, please? How long ago did you build, was that house behind their home and playground? When was it built?
The house, I believe it was completed in 2011, or we got a final inspection on the beginning of 2012, probably, but I'm not certain about the date.
So, roughly, it's been a few years, correct? So, my question then, too, is when you built this house, and it was high, the playground was there, correct?
I don't personally have knowledge of this.
Well, she is telling me it was built four and a half, five years ago, and I tend to believe her. So, when you built the house, was the playground there, or wasn't it?
I personally don't know.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me like it was. So, I just wanted to ask you that question because, in my opinion, if you were going to build a house with that kind of height, you would have thought about what you're looking at and worry about who's going to lease it looking at this playground. That's just my opinion, and I just wanted to ask you that question. So, thank you.
Can I address your question? Just, I have one thing to add. We bought the whole subdivision in 2004, and we had plans to build all these homes since 2004 until today.
Right, I understand.
So, and this playground was not built four and a half years ago. That I know because I asked other people about it. I don't know exactly when was it built, but the plans that we had was much earlier than that.
I'm not going to argue with you. My point is, it was there when the house was built, and in my opinion, it was there. So, that's just my opinion. So, thank you for that. The second thing I want to say is, I drove that neighborhood. Mr. and Mrs. Levitt, you can sit down. I'm just going to make my comments now. I drove the neighborhood, Mr. and Mrs. Levitt, not yesterday, but the day before, and what I, you can't see it from the street. You can't see it coming around. It's a luscious, beautiful neighborhood. And sometimes, we might build something that the city might not think is appropriate because it's too close to the wall, or it's out of whack with a couple of things. It might be too high. But when I look at this and I see that the grounds are so well-kept, you've got the safety stuff underneath the playground if somebody falls, you've gone beyond the call of duty for your family to build something, in my opinion, that is better than trees, you know? I mean, not many people can have something like this. So, I'm going to support this item tonight, and I do hope you did speak with my councilwoman because it will go to her. And my whole thing is, if somebody behind you didn't like what they saw, they should have built their house somewhere else. So, with that, I'm going to listen to my other commissioners, but you will see my support on your playground tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Yeah, you know, personally, I just think there's better ways to screen with trees or if you want to screen that side of your patio, to have some sort of mesh or something along the lines, just putting up playground equipment and things like that to screen your neighbor, but then you're imposing on your neighbor and your neighbor's views as well, regardless of the house is there, the house wasn't there. And this is just my opinion. I respect your opinion, Vicki. Eventually, a house is going to be built there, and you have to think about, you've got to think about your neighbors. And the threshold that I usually look at is, does it affect your neighbors? Does it fit in the neighborhood? And will it have a negative effect on the neighboring property? Regardless of it's one house, everybody has their rights as well as property owners. So, I don't blame the applicant for not knowing that she needed a permit because it was playground equipment, and, you know, being a builder, I didn't even know that you needed a permit for playground equipment. But I did read the code since then, and I did see that you do need a permit for those types of things. So, personally, I would just like to see the screening happen in some other sort, some other way, and to have the equipment located on a part in the yard where there might be a little bit more room and be able to fit within that neighborhood a little bit better. And I understand that the neighbors are all in support in the general, what, Home View Court, but it doesn't really affect those neighbors. It would affect the neighbors on the backside, so that's just my two cents.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is one of those things that I didn't know you needed a permit for it either, but I also know that I have four grandchildren under the age of three, and if I wanted to screen my yard, as a grandparent, you think differently than anyone else. And yes, you worry about your neighbors, but your grandchildren are paramount, and I, if I was just fine people, I wouldn't be apologizing either. It just is what it is, and they seem to have taken the concern to try and screen the neighbor as much as possible, but it's a playground, it's a piece of playground equipment. I didn't look at it as an ancillary structure. I'm sorry. I just look at it as the slide for kids, and maybe they're more complex these days, but it is, I'll support the applicant's request.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yeah, I'm still a little confused whether there can be no trees because of the presence of the playground equipment or because there's something wrong with the soil. Is there an explanation on that?
Mrs. Levitt, why don't you come back up? Usually, we don't give applicants a second opportunity, but it sounds like there is a question. If you'll just keep it very brief, considering the time.
It's a leach fill on both sides. The big grass area on the other side where he said has a ton of room, it's a leach fill. We had to have, and there's two septets.
Good enough. And for the record, I thought this was a temporary structure and didn't need any permit either. I did think I saw some foundation under one of those pieces of equipment, but if you're saying there's not, then there's not.
Okay, sounds like we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. I'm ready to make a motion on variance number 53482 to make the motion for approval this evening on this item.
Please vote. And that motion carries, noting the absence of Chair Flingus.
Mr. Vice Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Excuse me, is that okay with my councilwoman?
She is the one who directed such.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 47 VAR 53621. The applicant owner is Eric Acosta for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required for a proposed 390 square foot addition to an existing 2,788 square foot single-family dwelling at 7055 Delray Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. May we please have a staff report?
Mr. Vice Chairman, the proposed expansion is to create an attached one-car garage. Staff finds the hardship is self-imposed, as the proposed development could be redesigned to meet code requirements, and staff recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you. Are you the applicant?
No, I'm the engineer.
Okay, will you please state your name and address?
Larry Sanchez, 7844 Soaring Brook Street.
Go ahead.
Basically, what I'm here tonight is, I helped the homeowner prepare the plan, site plan, elevations, and we have met in the past to the, I guess to the, there's some pictures there, but to the, I think it's the west side, I'm sorry, the east side of the property, there is, I believe it's a Clark County or a Las Vegas Valley Water District Reservoir, and the homeowner would like to propose a garage that's attached to the side of their property. And the reason why they're picking that side as opposed to any part of the property is for the mere fact that this is the only space they have for at least a one-car garage. Typically, these houses came with carports, porter cachets, with a semicircle driveway. I don't believe they came with garages, and so the homeowner would like to build this garage because they don't have any other space and they're infringing upon the setback. As an engineer, I told them, look, we can't go any more than five feet from the property line because if the water district or the health district would like to build a structure, there needs to be a five-foot buffer zone for, you know, fire resistance. So, we decided to go within five feet as opposed to two or three or right up to the property line.
Thank you very much. Are you the applicants, owners? Would you like to be heard? There you go.
Ricardo Acosta, 7055 Delray Avenue. I'll be briefed after talking about pigeons and playgrounds. Yeah, it's, everybody around the neighborhood has a garage. I mean, we have no garage, and I'm tired of buying Christmas ornaments and Halloween stuff, and it gets ruined right away. I need someplace to store a van and some, you know, all the stuff that a woman doesn't need in the house, so I'll be there probably. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this up for discussion amongst the planning commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, are you taking out those two big pine trees on the left side of your house?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Are you taking out those two big, mature pine trees?
Uh, no, I won't. I don't think they're going to be on the way.
Okay, thank you.
The structure will be flush with the outside corner of the house, and just for the record, the materials of the garage would match the existing house, concrete tile roof, three coats tucko. But yeah, those trees would stale, they're actually farther back than the trees.
Todd Farlow would be very proud of you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Quinn.
Being that this is going to the side of the property where there's a vacant piece of land next door to you, sir, and being that you're following the rule that you're going to be five feet away from the fence, not two feet, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And being that you're going to match the structure identically to your home?
Absolutely, yes.
With the same tile and everything else? Okay, then you will see my approval on this this evening. Regarding variance 53705, my motion is for approval on this item.
Commissioner Quinn, I think that was the wrong item.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was the one ahead of 47, excuse me. Regarding item variance 53621, my motion is for approval for the addition to your house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay. Let's take a short recess. We've been going about two hours. Okay.[985.72]
Okay, I think we're about ready to get started again. We are now on item forty-eight, VAR five-three-seven-zero-five. The applicant owner is Cesar Morales. For possible action on request for a variance to allow a one-foot side yard setback where three feet is required for an existing four-hundred-seventy-two-square-foot accessory structure, Class Two, and to allow a one-thousand-seventy-nine-square-feet of accessory structure floor area where five-hundred-twenty-five-square-feet is the maximum allowed at twenty-two-ten Poplar Avenue in Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, both of the variance requests are self-imposed hardships as the applicant built the structures without the required building permits. The building permit review process would have highlighted the fact that one of the accessory structures does not meet the minimum three-foot side yard setback before construction began. The review process would have also alerted the applicant that the total square footage of the accessory structures exceeded the maximum allowed on the parcel. In summary, if the applicant obtained building permits as required prior to construction, both of these issues would have been avoided. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, is concluded the applicant's hardship is self-imposed and preferential in nature, and staff recommends denial of the variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please state your name and address?
My name is Santos Aguilar, two-five-seven-five West Horizon Ridge, number six-two-one, Henderson, Nevada. My name is Santos Aguilar. I'm a representative for Mr. Cesar Merelit. Tonight, Commissioners, I would like to ask if it would be possible to get a recommendation on our variance that we're asking for. These structures right here were -- the house was built in nineteen forty-five, I believe, with a garage, which is the thousand-square-foot garage that's in the backyard. There was a permit pulled for the secondary structure that was there that had a permit that had never gotten completed by the previous owner of the home. The owner of the home now, which is Mr. Cesar Merelit, now owns the home with both of the accessory structures that are there. As you can see, these structures, some of these he's using for shops. He's actually probably should go into the pigeon business, I think, because that, I think, would be a really good situation for him on that. But at this point right now, he has a thousand-square-foot structure that he has that was built with the home and the secondary structure. This is the actual garage right here, which was closed in. And the other structure is the one with the -- this one here is the one with the actual permit that was pulled, I believe, in nineteen fifty, like fifty-five, I believe, is when the permit was pulled for that particular structure.
Okay.
And this particular structure is the one that has the one-foot setback on that side of the property.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this up for discussion amongst the planning commissioners.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, through you. Are you the owner of this property?
I'm the representative for the owner.
Okay. When I first seen this, I -- it's just the worst thing that I've seen in a long time. I mean, it's pretty bad.
Yeah.
But then I drove down that neighborhood in that alley, and this was probably the best-looking thing built on that entire street.[348.12][348.12](Laughter)
He does keep very good care of his home. He painted. His grass is groomed.
There are a number of structures. Abandoned vehicles in everybody's backyard.
Yes.
Everybody's backyard up and down that street could afford to use a forty-yard dumpster to clean the trash out.
Yes.
Half of these accessory structures don't have siding on them. And I was going to ask you the three questions. Does it affect your neighbors? Does it fit in the neighborhood? And will it have a negative effect on the neighborhood? I'm not going to ask you to go talk to your neighbors and get a letter of support from them, because they both have one, one foot off of their property line.
One thing I did notice, Commissioner, is that when the -- I looked at the city map and property lines, all through that area, I think when they built those homes, they didn't use any levels or tape measures or anything.
It doesn't look like it.
Some of the property lines are literally running through some of the houses in that area. So when they built these structures, particularly the next-door neighbor, his house is actually two foot onto the other properties, which...
Let me ask you a question through the vice chair. Are you basing that on Open Info map or the Clark County Assessors map, and are you...
The Clark County Assessors map and taking measurements from the street over.
Okay, because every now and then Clark County's GIS gets off, and it looks like the property line's going through a house, but it's really not.
Yeah. Yeah, we pulled measurements from the streets over and tried both directions because we thought maybe I was wrong, but...
Okay. I'm going to sum up by saying, it doesn't affect your neighbors. It unfortunately does fit in the neighborhood. And it's not going to have a negative effect. However, you need to go and build an apartment and get a building permit, because I don't know -- I see things on these pictures that just bother me.
Yeah.
That doesn't look safe. And you had this as a casita, somebody living in it.
Yes.
They were the ones who reported you to code compliance. Is that correct?
They have in-law quarters in the back, which is the thousand-square-foot, and I believe somebody was staying in that.
You needed a special use permit to do that.
Right. No, he's -- I told him that this happens to stay -- that he cannot have that as a rental or anything of that sort. It has to be used for his immediate family, if anything. Yeah.
Well, let's cull the storage shed, and let's put some tools in there and keep the people out.
He's a retired teacher, is what he is, so he tinkers around with...
And also, let's stop building stuff without permits.
Yeah.
I don't think that carports permit it. There's no paint on it yet. And it goes all the way up to the property line.
That's the property line I'm talking about, where the Mr. Hung's property goes two foot over onto his property. So his patio is actually correct to his property. It's Mr. Hung that's over onto his property, which is strange.
Yeah.
That was another case also, by the way, just so you know, that I had both of these cases. But when I was contacted by code enforcement, apparently they did have a permit for that house, and it was permitted right where it's at. So that one actually had to be withdrawn.
Well, let's do this. Let's get permits on this.
Yes.
Let's get permits on this within sixty days.
Yes. Okay.
And at least -- okay, I'm going to try to craft a motion here if nobody else... Let's let Commissioner Boner have a comment.
I have, because of the abundance of these so probable code enforcement issues, I'm wondering if there can't be some comprehensive neighborhood amnesty of things that have been built without permits to work neighborhood by neighborhood, to clean up neighborhoods in general. And if individuals do not comply with a granted amnesty, then we quadruple the fines and/or make them tear it down, whichever's, you know, comes worse. And I don't know how to propose that to the council, but I certainly think we need to do something to do more than this case-by-case process, for what it's worth.
Mr. Vice Chair, through you. I agree with that. I think that would be good, to allow people to go in and get permits and make all these places safer, so we'll have to take a look at that.
Maybe Mr. Aguilar can spread the word.
Yes. Okay, if there's no other comments, I'm ready to make a motion on item number forty-eight, VAR five-three-seven-zero-five, you know, due to the fact that it's harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood. It's not affecting your neighbors, and it's not going to have a negative effect on your neighbors. I'll make a motion for approval. However, within sixty days, I want you to have your plans prepared and turn them to the Building and Safety Department. Sixty days.
Yes.
And then, from the time that they issue that permit, I want you to have everything resolved on that within a hundred-and-eighty-day period.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Would you that be an amendment to condition number two, which requires all necessary building permits shall be obtained within sixty days and final inspections within one-hundred-and-eighty days?
Yes. Does your condition...
As I read, yeah. Condition number two just says, "All necessary building permits shall be obtained in final inspections." I amend it to say, "All necessary building permits shall be obtained within sixty days and final inspections within one-hundred-and-eighty days shall be completed in compliance with Title Nineteen and all code as required by the Department of Building and Safety."
That is my motion, as amended and stated by Doug Rankin.
And does the applicant agree to that amended condition?
Yes, he does.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Chair, this item goes forward to the July sixteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're on to item forty-nine, VAR five-three-eight-seven-one. The applicant owner is Dennis Pritchard. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow an accessory structure, Class Two, to be located nine feet from the rear property line where ten feet is required and five feet from the side property line where ten feet is required at ninety-one oh-nine Ghost Mountain Avenue in Ward Four. Staff recommends denial. May we please have the staff report?
Vice Chairman, no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances has been presented, and the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct an eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-square-foot accessory structure, Class Two, within the required side and rear yard setback area as required by code. Alternate design and/or placement of the proposed accessory structure could allow for conformance to Title Nineteen requirements. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature, and staff recommends denial of the variance request. Please note that additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? I don't see any. Let's do -- let's trail this to the end of our public item agenda. So let's move on to related items fifty and fifty-one. Item fifty, SUP five-three-nine-zero-nine. The applicant is LVCSD Saddle LLC. The owner is Gregson Beltway Bell Castro LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a primary -- for a private school, primary use on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately six-hundred-ten feet north of Craig Road in Ward Four. Staff recommends approval. And item fifty-one, SDR -- related item fifty-one, SDR five-three-nine-one-zero, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed two-story, fifty-four-thousand-square-foot private school primary in Ward Four. Staff also recommends approval of that item. May we please have the staff report?
Vice Chairman, the applicant is requesting to construct a new two-story, public charter primary school, grades K through eight, near the intersection of Craig Road and Rainbow Boulevard. Site contains two parcels. The eastern parcel fronting Rainbow Boulevard containing a single-family dwelling that will be demolished. The western parcel is currently undeveloped. Parking facilities would face Rainbow Boulevard. Pickup and drop-off area would be located along the north side of the site with access from Balsam Street. As the proposed school is appropriately located and conforms to Title Nineteen and other city codes, staff recommends approval with conditions. If denied, the project could not be constructed as proposed. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Bob Gronhour, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. In this matter, I'm representing the applicant, which is Turner Agassi. This is a charter school. This is not a private school. As you're aware, charter schools are a part of the public school system itself. On behalf of representing the Turner Agassi Fund here, I'm also representing the Academica, which is going to be the management company of the school itself. You may be familiar with the charter schools such as Somerset Academy and also Durrell Academy. Those are schools that are also going to -- are also affiliated through the Turner Agassi and Academica. We had a voluntary neighborhood meeting. A couple neighbors showed up with respect to the meeting itself. There were a couple discussions with respect to traffic. I know I've been working with traffic today about amending a condition that I believe traffic has to mention for the record itself. I do appreciate staff's recommendation for approval for this site with the use permit and the site development plan review, and I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gronhour. Does anyone else wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion among the commission.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as my -- I have a partner that owns an adjacent parcel here, and so I will not be voting.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item fifty, I would move for approval of SUP five-three-nine-zero-nine, subject to all staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, there is a condition that needs to be read in from Public Works, I believe.
Thank you. Go ahead from the staff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the SUP, we'd like to replace our condition seven with the following. The Traffic Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works shall review the vehicular circulation as it relates to adjacent public streets within six months of the school opening. If traffic-related issues arise due to the operation of the school, the applicant shall coordinate with the Traffic Engineering Division to mitigate such issues to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to move for approvals with the replacement of condition number seven as read in by Public Works and approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Please vote on item fifty. That motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, item fifty-one, SDR five-three-nine-one-zero, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Please vote on item fifty-one. That motion also carries, again noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Mr. Vice Chair, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on to item fifty-three, SUP five-three-eight-two-eight. The applicant is Interstate Properties Incorporated. The owner is Rio Vista Plaza LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto title loan use at seventy-one forty-five West Ann Road, Suite one-ten in Ward Four. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Vice Chairman, the proposed use complies with all Title Nineteen minimum special use requirements and can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the surrounding and existing future land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission. Chris Kemper here on behalf of the owner and the applicant. The staff said it all. We accept all of staff conditions. In their findings, you can note, they say, "The auto title loan use is appropriate for the PD zone. The proposed use is compatible with the SC general plan land use designation and can be conducted in a harmonious manner. The site is physically suitable for this type of use, and the intensity is appropriate in this area of the city. Ample site access is provided and adequate. Parking is being provided for the shopping center. The subject site is accessed by Ann Road, Drexel Road, and Rio Vista Street. All streets are sufficient to accommodate the number of vehicular trips associated with the proposed use. Approval of this special use permit will not compromise public health, safety, or welfare, as the proposed auto title loan use will be subject to regular inspections. All requirements for an auto title loan use and Title Nineteen point twelve are being met. There were no protests. We had a neighborhood meeting. No one showed up. We respectfully request your approval of this application." And I want to personally thank staff for handling my presentation tonight, just going through their findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper. Does anyone else wish to be heard on item fifty-three? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Do any of the commissioners have any comments, questions of the applicant? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Quin -- or Commissioner Schlotman. Do you have a comment?
No, I was just going to take the mic if nobody else was.
Please do.
All right, on item number fifty-three, SUP five-three-eight-two-eight, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Please vote. That motion carries.
Thank you all very much, and good evening.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of appeal.
Thank you very much, staff, by the way, as well.
Thank you. Item fifty-four, SUP five-three-eight-two-nine. The applicant is Chipotle Mexican Grill Incorporated. The owner is WRI Charleston Commons LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment use within a proposed twenty-four-hundred-square-foot restaurant at one-eleven North Nellis Boulevard, Suite one-fifty in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Vice Chairman, staff finds the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses and recommends approval. Please note, we have received an additional protest since publication.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Yes, Matthew Duchov, four-hundred South Rampart. I'll be brief. Thank you.
That was brief.
It's just way late. I had to get some laugh out there. I just recommend go with staff's approval. I have nothing else to add unless you have any questions for me.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion among the commissioners? Seeing none? How about a motion?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, on item fifty-four, SUP five-three-eight-two-nine, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval.
Please vote. That motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you, Director. Thank you. Have a good evening.
We're now on item fifty-five, SUP five-three-eight-six-three. The applicant is Dollar Loan Center, and the owner is La Manza LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed two-thousand-six-hundred-forty-nine-square-foot auto title loan use with waivers to allow a one-hundred-foot distance separation from a residential use where two-hundred feet is required, and to allow a one-hundred-thirty-foot distance separation from a similar use where one-thousand feet is required at forty-seven-hundred Meadows Lane, Suite one-ten in Ward One. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Hi, Mr. Vice Chairman. Staff finds that the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses, as exemplified by the requested waivers. Staff is recommending denial. Please note, we have received additional protests and support since publication.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Dave Galyon, eighty-eight sixty West Sunset Road. So everyone's familiar with this project. We are currently directly across the street at two-eighty South Decatur. What we are proposing is to move the property from here to this location, and we would close down our current location. Staff's recommendation for denial based on residential of one-hundred-feet separation where two-hundred feet is needed. Our new location would currently be here. We are actually several hundred feet away from any residential, but it is based on property line. We understand that. Currently, the hundred-and-thirty-foot separation, I was a little confused in the report. Property line to property line across Decatur is roughly a hundred-and-thirty feet, so I think they're basing it off of our current location. The Cardenas Shopping Center does have check-cashing abilities, similar to Smith's Food King and a Barnes Grocery Store, as the convenience to their customers, but do not provide any other services. Our main reason for wanting to move across the street is recently, the property at two-eighty South Decatur has gone through a major foreclosure. Target has shut down. All other residences -- or all of the businesses have moved out, other than Pizza Hut and the Cleaners. Porta Sub still has their signs up but has shut down. If you see the parking lot, this is at eleven o'clock this morning. Three of these vehicles in front of our store are my employees. The other one is a customer. There is nothing to draw any business into this complex, and there are no plans. The entire complex is bank-owned. They have put it up for auction three times now, and no one has purchased it. If you look at the same time of day going across the street where we would like to move, there's abundant traffic, people coming in. For us, it does show that there -- a reason for us to move over there as opposed to where we are now. We actually get further away from residential, where our current location has a zero-foot separation because of the apartment complex that sits behind us. We already are basically within that same distance because of Cardenas in our current location. So moving and closing down the one at two-eighty South Decatur would not put any additional impact on the area. For that reason, we are asking for approval as opposed to the denial, with the understanding that we would meet all conditions from staff.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this item? I'll close the public comment and open this up for discussion.
I'd like to listen to my fellow commissioners before I make my motion, please.
Commissioner Boner?
I just want to be clear. The hundred-and-thirty feet is -- excuse me, the thousand... The separation from a similar use is your own use. No other use other than that Cardenas.
By the way that I'm reading staff's report, yes.
Okay. That's my question, and you've answered. Thank you. Okay, that's my question, and you've answered, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Quin?
And you are closing down the other operation to open the new operation, so we're not gonna have two
Absolutely not.
Within three-hundred feet of each other.
No, no, as soon as this is approved, we'll pull our permits, do our build-outs, which we approximately will take sixty days. As soon as we, the day we open our doors at forty-seven hundred Meadows Lane, the doors shut down at two-eighty South Decatur.
Okay.
Does staff have any input, or?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Vice Chairman, the location would still be eligible for a financial institution specified for one year, at which time that would expire. The applicant here can't surrender that because it goes with the property. So there is a chance that another financial institution specified could move into the location within a year, and would not require a new SUP. And would be permitted by right.
Based on the photos, that would be a surprise to all of us. Commissioner Quin?
Well, that really threw a wrench in it. Well, I'm gonna trust the fact that you're gonna close that one down, and the minute you close that one down, the other one's going to open up. Okay? Okay, so with that, I'm gonna make a motion for approval of SUP five-three-eight-six-three. I'm going to add a condition, when can you open up the new place?
Is this final action?
No.
Alright, so July sixteenth is the meeting?
Yes.
July twenty-sixth, so mid-October, October twentieth is what I would estimate, based on the meetings.
So I'm going to put a condition on it, that, an administrative condition, that six months from today that the existing one is closed, and the new one is open and operating, and if they're both open, you're closed up, got it?
Agreed.
Okay, there you go, that's my motion.
Okay, we're all comfortable with that? Director?
I'd look for guidance from our City Attorney on the language of that condition. I'm not sure what authority we would have to do that as an administrative item.
Could I put a year on it, Mr. City Attorney? Because that's when it's up.
What I would recommend that we do is we do a one-year administrative review.
I just wanna make sure that both not open at the same time, because I'll be fired, so.
We'll send it to Council with that recommendation.
Pardon me?
We'll send it to Council with that recommendation, but I think that the Director's idea is the right one, put a one-year review on it.
So a one-year review from today, that the one is closed, and the new one is operating, and that's, and then my motion will be for approval, going on to City Council.
Got it.
Thank you.
And does the applicant agree to that stated condition?
Yes, we do.
Alright, with that, and the, the condition is stated, please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item does go on to the July sixteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. Item fifty-seven, SUP five-three-nine-seven-zero, the applicant owner is Dynamic Property Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a public school secondary use at seventy-four eighty-five West Azure Drive in Ward six. Staff recommends approval, may we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Vice Chairman, the existing building is located within an existing one, one-hundred-and-four-thousand square foot office complex, which provides cross-access and shared parking throughout the entire site. The applicant is not proposing any exterior alterations to the existing building, the proposed use meets all Town Center and Title nineteen requirements, and staff finds that this use is compatible with the retail and office uses in the complex, as such, staff recommends approval of the request.
Thank you, please state your name and address.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Deborah Roberson, I'm the Superintendent of Quest Preparatory Academy Schools. I reside at seven-nine-six-five Rio Vista, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Jones, I am the Chief Marketing Officer of Quest Preparatory Academy, and, I'm sorry, just for clarification, are you looking for office address or home address?
We'll take either one.
Okay, wasn't sure, just wanted to clarify, our corporate address is, excuse me, seventy-four ninety-five West Azure, and we're in Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-three-zero.
Thank you, anything to add about this, this project, this item?
I do believe at some point there was a concern about traffic flow for the school, so I do have a diagram to kinda give some clarification to the Commissioners and Vice Chairs, just to clarify some things, if that's okay?
Please do.
Please let me know if I need to adjust this, is this where you guys can see it?
It's good, right there.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so there were some concerns in regards to traffic flow, so I did wanna clarify, we do have two points of entry into the parking lot and one exit. That exit is right turn only, you can make a left, but we are restricting that to right turn only, just for safety purposes. As far as the two entry points, we are only allowing one lane in in one direction, so it does allow for two lanes, but we're only allowing one in one direction, just to promote safety in that parking lot. If you can see the highlighted spots here, those are being completely blocked off when students are being dropped off and picked up. So just to add another safety element to the transfer of students in and out of that parking lot. And we are also assigning five, five to six staff, if not more, if needed, that's kind of up to the discretion of the, the school and the, where the traffic flow is, but we are anticipating at least five or six staff members stationed in that parking lot when students are being dropped off and picked up to regulate traffic. I'm not sure if there are any additional questions, clarifications that need to be ironed out?
They may have questions once we close the public comment, anything else from either of you?
No, sir.
Thank you very much, does anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening Commissioners, I haven't done this before, so I'll do the best I can and be as brief as I can.
How about starting with your name and address?
I'm sorry. Andrew Corwin, thirty-nine-hundred South Wallop Way, eight-nine-one-four-seven. My name is Andrew Corwin, I am the property manager for the owner of Building G, seventy-four sixty-five West Azure at the Shea-Teneille Village Business Park. The Building G is here, and Building B, which is the proposed school, is this building here. And may I ask, do you know what the total number of students is expected to be?
Sir?
Sir.
About four-hundred, okay.
Can you, when we were looking at this initially, you pointed to Building G, and we could not see that, will you point that out?
I'm sorry. Can you see that? This is Building G.
Thank you.
This is Building B, where the school is proposed.
Okay.
I'm speaking tonight on the, is this on?
It will be.
Okay. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the owner in consideration of the past, current, and future needs of his building as a whole, and our long-term tenant since two thousand and eight. Our tenant is a dialysis clinic. Their needs are within, their needs and business are within the scope of the current zoning and business park CCNRs as originally planned and currently enforced. We do not support the SUP and the secondary school use proposed, as we have concerns as to the overall effect it will have on the day-to-day business in the business park, to the ease and access of, I'm sorry, to the ease of access and egress daily to the park as a whole, and specifically for our tenant, the likely inconvenience and occasional life and death situation if medical help cannot reach or egress in an expeditious manner due to a possible medical emergency because of parking or pickup and drop-off traffic, and the addition of up to an estimated three-hundred-and-fifty, I now hear four-hundred additional people in Building B. When we were first told by our association that a school might be a new tenant in Building B, it was assumed it would be a business or trade school, which would have the appropriate potential for a better fit in this business park, and would, I believe, be considered a permissible use without a special use permit. Specifically, we have concerns over the parking, the daily traffic, the pickup and drop-off traffic route, and the general safety of the entire business park as a whole before and after school in terms of students skateboarding or similar types of activities. The dialysis clinic is open six days a week from four AM to six PM. With approximately fifty patients a day, we have twelve to fifteen staff per day, three or four doctors in and out throughout the day. Considering parking, we question how the staff arrived at its conclusion in the analysis that parking would be adequate. I'm gonna raise a couple of things here, but I realize that the numbers themselves can vary. We're unable to find any place that says the two-story buildings A and B were medical office labeled originally. This may have been in the four-six-two-thousand-and-five approved review, that allowed a building greater than one story in height, however of note, this had a staff recommendation of denial at that time. On the plans, it is stated that forty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet were allocated for medical office use at one to two-hundred square feet. If you add up the total square footage of Buildings C through G, that's, can you see this? C
Yep.
D, E, F, and G, that combines to equal the forty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-two, two-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet that's indicated on the plans as medical-oriented. No other combination seems to work. We do not see where staff took into consideration the assigned parking, and on the map I'm showing you here, assigned parking is all where the numbers are written into the various parking places. And I can get into these numbers specifically if you want, but in the interest of time, I'll move on.
Thank you.
Building A is surrounded by ninety-six spaces total, twenty-eight of which are assigned. At twenty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet, they have the right to a hundred-and-twenty-six spaces. And I'm using the average four-point-five-two-per-thousand-square-foot ratio here. Or thirty-six spaces more than they have immediately in the vicinity of their building is their need. So Building A, which would normally use this parking area here, if, if they are full, they need more parking out and beyond here. When I put together this presentation and, and added up our numbers, I did not know until just now that all of this parking is going to be blocked off and eliminated, that eliminates about thirty spaces, I believe. So that essentially takes all of the parking from, for this building, and what, what, if they use parking here, that's gonna overflow into here. They use all of this, and then it backs up and around Building G. We're not saying that there isn't enough parking, we're saying that when it fills up all of this parking area, it's starting to create another situation, which is difficult of ease for people to get in and out, specifically the patients of our tenant, and also the ingress and egress route that they are using. Do you still have that up? I'll pull that up. This ingress and egress goes behind our building here, uses all three of the entrances to the park, and we are concerned that at the times when students will be coming in and leaving school, that that's going to create a very large traffic problem, further indicated by the fact that they are in need of five additional people to monitor the parking. We believe that with a school on property of approximately three-fifty to four-hundred students plus staff, this could create elements of before and after school that can be a safety hazard. We have already had ongoing safety issues with usually younger people skateboarding through the park, using the sidewalk entrance from the south. We've had several instances of people being knocked over, no one's been hurt so far. But we would expect that this could increase with four-hundred students going to school there. In the winter, when it's dark early, any group after dark is a concern to us and the safety of our tenant, patients, and staff. For this reason, we are adamant about keeping the lighting up and in good repair at all times. We believe that with a school on-site of three to four-hundred students, the chance of groups of kids before and after school, as well as the potential increase in one of the south sidewalk entrances with skateboards, et cetera, although harmless in intent by virtue of its being kids just having fun, can and will create safety issues that we should not have to deal with in a business park, not in the vicinity of a ninth to twelfth grade school. I trust this has given you a good picture of our concerns, and ask that you will take the above into consideration before approving this use. I'm available for questions now or later if I can apply any other information.
Thank you very much, does anyone else wish to be heard on this?
Can I ask a question, will we have an opportunity to address some of his concerns, because I think there's an issue of misinformation?
I think you're going to have an opportunity as we ask some questions. If you wanna, I'll, I'll give you a brief minute to go ahead and tell us what you think was, was misstated.
Okay, well, not so much misstated, just I think there's a misunderstanding, just to clarify, this, our, this location is going to be grade six, six through, excuse me, six through twelve. We only have, I believe, ten students that have registered their cars, as far as seniors that are able to drive and have vehicles to get to school, we have less than twenty staff members. Essentially, we're not, we're not going to fill up this parking lot, this is, most, a majority of our kids can't even drive. As far as parents coming in and dropping off their kids, we have staggered those drop-off times, it's not going to be an influx of parents coming into that parking lot. The, the times are staggered, and our school day is also extended from eight to three, so these kids are going to be dropped off between seven, seven-thirty in the morning. Seven-thirty is probably seven-forty-five in the morning, which is typically before these businesses are even open. And also clarify, those parking spots are not being closed off permanently, it's just during those times that kids are being dropped off and picked up. And we do not allow skateboards, this, this is a charter school, these kids are staying in that building, they're not going to have an opportunity to wander the parking lot before or after school. They get out of the car, they go into the school, into the classroom, so this isn't a situation like a typical public school, where you see kids kinda wandering around before and after school. This is a very controlled environment, we have multiple campuses around Las Vegas, this has yet to be an issue with kids wandering.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm going to close the public comment portion, open this up for discussion among
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
The Commissioners, and start with Commissioner Truesdale.
The applicant, I'm, I'm curious here, the kids are in classroom all day long, they don't, there's no kinda like outside area?
No.
No?
This is a completely closed campus.
This is a reformatory? I mean, I don't, I don't understand how you put sixth graders and twelfth graders in the same building all day long. You, and realistically, you've got hormone issues, you've got age issues, I, I'm sorry, I I sit on the board of a private school, I've researched this for thirty-five years, and it just doesn't make sense to put sixth graders and twelfth graders in the same building. And not to have a outside recreation area of, or any kind of recreation area for sixth graders to exercise. Just, I'd love to say that kids, kids wanna be in a classroom, and they really wanna learn, those whole, whole eight hours you're there, but just going between classrooms, the social interaction is rather bizarre to me.
Commissioner, may I speak to that, please?
Sure.
I'm Deborah Roberson, and, and two things that you need to know, because we are a state-sponsored charter school, we are not able to go out and purchase large plots of land to build schools, we have to basically rent or lease or purchase buildings that are already equipped. The schools that we are at now do not have baseball field, playground, we have indoor gyms. We're going to be using the facilities after school at the Centennial YMCA, that's about five minutes from our campus, we already have an agreement with them, just as we did when we were at the Meadows YMCA on Meadows Mall, where we had a school there at the same time. I wish we did have the funding and the resources to have the land, we will have a full gym in the bottom floor. We will have a full gym in the bottom floor of the building. And I understand your concern about middle school and high school kids together. Trust me, the middle school children are more of an issue than the high school children are. And we have two stories. So we're going to have the high school kids on the second floor and the middle school kids on the first floor. So we will have some separation. They won't have lunches together. We have a simulated courtroom that we're going to put in our building because we want to do emphasis on law and criminology, mock judges' chambers. So we're trying to make as much as we can in a confined area and make it not a magnet school, but a school where children might want to go to specialize in these areas. Trying to make the best of the space that we could find to accommodate the expansion needs we have.
Do you operate schools that are K through six or K-5 or?
Yes, sir, we currently do.
I mean, I'm confident the school district would have no problem if they just stripped off all the trappings that we've required schools to have and we'd probably have a budget that's manageable. I just, this is a business park. It's not a, it's not designed as a school. We had a charter school earlier, which I abstained from. But if you looked at their plan, it, it has queuing for drop-off, has queuing for pickup. It has all of the, the elements that a typical school would have. And in the name of saving dollars or being shoehorning into the, this is, this is the wrong process. We need to educate kids, but we don't need to stick them in office buildings next to dialysis centers. I, I just, I understand the Y is a temporary solution that's been used for years around this valley. But, I mean, you've got two car dealerships across the street. You've got a dialysis center. And just because there's a vacant building doesn't mean we should put a school into it that has not proper design, not proper queuing for drop-off. And I'm not here to take up the arguments of the adjacent property owner, but this just doesn't fit a school. And we've, we've had items like this before come before us and some of them haven't worked, some of them have. But when, when you see what has been presented from a charter school perspective earlier this evening and this, it's dramatically different. And even the 100-student school that, that came in for a kindergarten class had outside recreation. You've got dressing rooms in here for, changing rooms for kids. So it just doesn't make sense to me, so.
May I add one other, one other comment? When, when this building first became available, it was only a shell. The outside was built and that was it. And we had charter school architects come in and meet with us. We actually planned out how the inside of the building would be to fit a school. And in addition, the owner of the, of the complex that we've been dealing with, when these discussions first came about, he was the one that said he didn't feel like traffic would be an issue, that, that the dialysis center is far enough away from us in a different location with our scattered start times.
He had a vacant building, he'll say anything.
Pardon?
He had a vacant building, he'll say anything.
But I want you to know that our governing board and the State Department in Nevada doesn't just give us a green card to say go buy whatever and make it work. They have been working with us diligently along the way and making sure that we have met all the requirements that the State Department imposes upon us. So I don't want you to think that we just went out to find a vacant building and said we're going to make a school here. We did do all of our homework to make sure it would be a school that would have all the necessary requirements, physically, mentally, and emotionally, we need to, to provide an excellent education for these children.
Okay.
Commissioner Goins?
Good. I just had a quick question on the, on the, how are you going to get the, get the, what's, what's the daily curriculum for, for the sixth graders? And I guess my question would be around outside activity. And you say you're going to go down to the Y and, and things like that. What, what's that encompass?
Yes, sir. Our curriculum is the Common Core State Standards that I'm sure all of you have read about. We are bound by that because we are a state-funded charter school and that's the curriculum we use. We use core knowledge materials to teach that curriculum. Now, when you get to the high school, then we're content-specific and we're bound by those subjects that children.
Why are we bound by Common Core? It's, it's not a proven process?
Sir?
Why are we bound by Common Core?
The state of Nevada has adopted Common Core State Standards.
States made mistakes before?
Sir?
The state has made mistakes before. But just going to a cookie-cutter educational program that goes from coast to coast doesn't make it a right program.
And I'm not here to debate what the state chose or didn't choose because we're state-funded, we're obligated to, to do what the state requires of us. The high school, we're under all of the high school proficiency requirements. This past year, we graduated 100% of our students.
I'm talking about the middle school. I, I'm talking about the sixth grade. I mean, I'm looking at the holistic approach of raising a kid and what, what his or her day will entail. And the reason I ask is, my parents are the namesake of an elementary school and retired principals. And my family has over a little 150 years of education in the Clark County School District. And I'm a license of myself. But I know that when you put a sixth grader out of the car into the building, at what time?
They'll be 8 o'clock.
And what time are they coming out for exercise?
They'll be exercising in the gym, which is where we have our, our exercise now in the building that we're currently in.
This building has a gym?
Yes, sir. We built that out.
So what, so you mentioned going to the YMCA. When does?
I'm sorry, if that was misleading, that's where our, our secondary students will go for their sports, for football, for baseball, track, tennis. And most, and that will be the secondary students. That are, we're NIAA sanctioned and those are the kinds of facilities we have to offer for those students.
So, so what time, what type of record exercise for the youth are in here besides just the gym?
Yes, sir.
So there's physical education courses? Do the kids go outside to even see the sun, breathe the air during a day at school? Or is it all confined inside of a office building?
Unfortunately, if you saw the school that we're in now, there is no, we have a kindergarten playground and we have a grass area in the back. We don't, even now in the school that we operate, we don't have a physical play area for the children. So that's why we've tried to make the gym. And currently in the school that we're now in, there's a multipurpose room. It would try to do as much physical activity. We do weightlifting. There will be a weightlifting room within the new building. We've tried to do as much as we can and incorporate all of the requirements within the confines of the building and the space that we have. And again, we're trying to make the best use of the facilities that we can find.
What's your, what's your population or your student class size going to be?
26 in K through 3 and then 28 in the upper grades, 30 in the high school.
Thank you.
I do have just a couple of questions. Well, comment and question. I'm not nearly as concerned about the parking as I am the queuing. And I think the drop-off is less of a problem than pickup is because of business hours. And, you know, it's more likely that the, the parking lot will be, will be fuller or more full. Can you tell me, I know you mentioned earlier that there would be staggered drop-off times. Is there also a staggered pickup time?
Yes, Commissioner, and I want, I want to also, because of the five teachers that we'll have out front, we've got a pretty good system now of as quickly as those cars can drive up, drop off, pick up, and move on. We've pretty much been able to move about, currently in our current building, about 300 children within a 20-minute period. And we've got the parents well-trained in how to drop off, how to pick up. And that's why we have the five staff members out front to make sure that it is a smooth process and we're not holding up lines. But it takes us about 15 minutes to drop off, about 15 minutes to pick up. And those times will be staggered as well to make sure that we're not having a backlog in front of the building or taking up parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. I know this is a charter school and so people are going to have a choice about whether or not their children attend that school. I've looked closely at this and you're going to see my support on it.
May I just ask one quick question? When my son Stephen went to ATech, there was no sports there as well. But a lot of the kids, if they wanted to play basketball or baseball or whatever, they could go to their home school in their neighborhood to play the sport. Do you offer that to these children as well? Like if you have a great baseball player or a kid that wants to play sports, do you allow them to go to their neighborhood school and play sports as a normal child would want to in the upper grades?
We allow it, Commissioner Graham, but it's really up to the receiving school whether they take them or not.
They have to by law. I'm asking you, do you encourage it and do you allow it like ATech did?
We don't encourage that. We hope that they'll stay with us and play sports with us because we want to build up our program. But we do allow it if that's what they'd like to do.
Well, you're not going to be able to build it up without a field. I mean, you know, I'm trying to say, so the kids at ATech, if they lived near Western, played at Western. If they lived near Clark, they played at Clark. So they didn't miss out on any of that stuff. So my question to you is, are you going to offer that same thing to these children?
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's tough. I'm going to, I understand the applicant has had this, vented through the Quest Academy's, I guess, team that comes out and assesses buildings and looks at the suitability and have found this to be proper. And also through, it's all been approved to the state in Nevada. I will recommend approval, but I'd, I'd want to put a one-year review on this to, to, and I'd actually like to bring it back to the, to the commission as opposed to just administrative review. And so with that, I will move for approval of SUP 53970, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Before we vote, can I ask the applicant if you agree to that, that review?
Yes, sir, we agree to that. We're under annual review anyway and it would be very appropriate for us to come back and let you know how we're doing.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Vice Chair, that action is final, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recalling item 49 VAR 53871. Do we have anyone here on that item? Any direction from the director on that?
You can take action on an item if an applicant is not here. However, if there are any conditions that need to be agreed upon, it's our preference that we wait until the applicant is present.
Okay.
Then if the applicant's not here, based on the fact that it's a recommendation for denial, I would make a motion to hold it for 30 days, give the applicant a chance to present their case and at least we, whatever decision's made, it's an informed decision for them.
Okay. The motion is to obey until the next planning commission. Please vote. And the motion to obey carries. Moving on to director's business, item 49 TXT 53959. The applicant owners the city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19.02.300 to revise definitions, purpose, permit fees, and compliance procedures related to multiple species habitat conservation and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, I recently adopted interlocal agreement among multiple jurisdictions for the Clark County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. The city of Las Vegas needs to adjust its ordinance regarding that plan to mirror those of the Clark County and to repeal the mitigation fee exception for government projects. Proposed amendment serves three, these purposes. The Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan mitigation fee and associated processing fees added to development permits will remain unchanged at this time. And I can answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and ask the Commissioners whether they have any questions or comments.
Well, obviously the, we can conform with the county and the state on this and it'll be a better place because they've spent more thinking on this than they have on charter school minimum standards. So I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion is for approval? Please vote. That motion carries. Item 59 is approved.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item goes forward to City Council in ordinance format.
Thank you. We are now at item 62, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. I don't see anyone who would like to give any citizen participation comment. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting.